Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest in general nature thereof this evening? Counselor Dunn?
Through you, your worship, I had a pecuniary interest on the confidential report CAO-01018 in the closed session.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else? Nothing else? Well, let me just get to it here. Moving towards the approval of council minutes, looking for a mover and seconder on the special council meeting budget held December 12th and 13th, Counselor Verbiki and Counselor Wilkinson, discussion on the motion, all in favor. Motion carries. And then also mover and seconder for the minutes of the council meeting held January the 8th, Counselor, Deputy Mayor, and Counselor Hammond, discussion on that motion, all in favor, and carried. And is there any business arising out of either of those sets of minutes? See none? So move on to public meetings. First one is a public meeting in regard to considering an official plan change on 295 Erie Street South. Ms. Ros, Jevonsky, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, your worship. Tonight we're here for official plan amendment number seven and zoning bylaw amendment number 163, both being applications that affect the property that's on the southwest corner of Parkdale Avenue in Erie Street South. The applicants have requested that the official plan designation of the property that is on the south side of Parkdale, and if you're able to look at the screen, you'll see two vacant lots on the south side of Parkdale, just to the west of the house known as 291 Erie Street South. Those two lots are currently designated as residential under our official plan, and the applicants are proposing to change that designation to Erie Street South Commercial District, which is the same designation that actually applies to the two properties on Erie Street, which also form the subject lands, those two properties being 291 and 295 Erie Street South. The applicant has consolidated these lots and is proposing to develop them together for purposes of a drive-through restaurant. The current designation being residential, of course, would not permit any commercial The zoning change that's proposed actually affects the entire parcel. Right now, the property, all four lots are zoned, R1, which is a single detached residential category under the zoning bylaw, and the applicant's proposing to change the zoning to a site-specific commercial category that will permit the drive-through restaurant that's proposed, as well as certain other commercial uses. This particular property falls within an area that is primarily commercial in nature. There is a bit of residential to the north and west, as well as some other shopping center commercial type uses. There's also the motel to the north. Bank of Montreal sits immediately to the south of the site. And then across Erie Street are other commercial uses, primarily in a shopping center format. On December 11th, council will remember, we held the statutory public meeting for both the official plan and zoning change that have been requested. At that time, we did hear from a number of members of the public, area residents that were circulated with the public notice. A traffic impact study was done. We were able to tell council at that time that we had come to, the municipality had come to an agreement that the traffic impact study was acceptable, and that position still remains at this time. We sent out public notice again for this meeting tonight. We notified the same members of residents and property owners that we did last time around, and we did hear from one of the same members, that were, same residents that was at the last meeting, and I'm sure that, I believe she's here tonight, and she will, I'm sure, probably speak to her concerns and her suggestions. I also received an email this afternoon from Michael Verakis, and the Verakis family owns five properties in this area. They have indicated that they have concerns regarding safety, in particular, to do with the increase in vehicular and pedestrian traffic. They've asked if there would be more accidents, whether a crosswalk has been thought of, what about traffic, additional traffic signals. And as I indicated before, a traffic impact study was done, so the municipality is satisfied that those issues have been addressed. Secondly, Mr. Verakis has asked whether any other properties had been looked at, more particularly, have they looked, has the applicant looked at any currently commercially zoned properties? And our understanding is that there are not a lot of available commercial properties in this particular area, and that, they also have done a planning justification report, as I will get to, which addresses why this particular site is appropriate. Lastly, the, I want to say relaxations, the things that are variances from the zoning bylaw, the reduction of the side yard setback, the reduction in the number of parking spaces that's required, and the reduction in the amount of onsite landscaped open space that's required, Mr. Verakis has concerns with, he's concerned that there wouldn't be adequate space on the property to provide pickup of garbage and recycling products, and also for the delivery of items that would come to the takeout or the drive-through restaurant. And he's concerned that more traffic bottlenecks could occur. I'm of the opinion that we have addressed the concerns that have been raised by Mr. Verakis by way of, in my report, and all of these issues were certainly looked at in the planning justification report that was submitted by the applicant. Under the municipality's official plan for commercial properties, there are a number of criteria that have to be satisfied anytime there's an official plan amendment. I'm not going to go through each one specifically, because I did in December, on December 11th. They're identified in the report, and we're confident that the applicant has satisfied all of those, either by way of the traffic impact study, by servicing plans that are submitted, also by the planning justification report. And then also, there are criteria in the official plan that are required to be satisfied anytime there's a rezoning application. And again, we're confident that the applicant has accommodated all of these criteria, and that we're able to support the applications as a result of that. One thing that is different in this report from the one from December is that site plan control approval is now being recommended. At the December 11th meeting, council requested that the site plan return to council for approval rather than receiving approval at administration, which is the normal process these days. So the application for site plan approval was already being reviewed at that point, but they've pushed it through the process in order to get it back on council's agenda for this evening. And the site plan that is being recommended for approval is a little bit different from the one that's included in my report, but in terms of the location of the building, the access points, landscaping locations, the width of any driveways, parking spaces, all of that remains the same. The only thing that would be different would be possibly like the fence location, the type of fence, those things are still to be dealt with. And in particular, one of the things that is a little different from the norm for site plan approval, and I just want to bring it to council's attention, is that we are requesting through the site plan approval process that certification from a qualified professional be provided in order to state that the acoustical fence is sufficient to handle any noise that could come from the speaker box and/or the driveway vehicles that would be in the drive-through. And we did not receive a noise study through the review of the applications, and this is one way that we are able to ensure that there won't be any noise problems for the residents, especially to the west. As I had indicated previously, the speaker box will be facing to the south, to the Bank of Montreal parking lot, so it's not going to be facing directly to the west where the residence is, or to the north, which is another location of residence is on Parkdale. The, one other minor thing too, landscaping usually is shown on their site plan control applications. In this particular instance, we are requesting that a landscaping plan be submitted as part of the site plan approval process, and that will identify specific types of landscaping that will also be provided as a buffer to help with possibly the noise that could affect any residents to the west. And in particular, it will tell us whether there's going to be any shrubbery, what types of shrubs, whether there would be trees in that area, if it's going to be any hard surfing, like some kind of hard surface of landscaping as well. So those are things that are a little bit different than our normal process for site plan approval, but we are requesting that, I just want to make sure you're aware of it, that we're requesting that through our recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. So before we go, public questions from council members? So Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Heather, I know your report is lengthy, but the last time we were together, we had asked for the applicant's consultant to supply us with a traffic study. I mean, they referenced one, but I, and I know in talking to administration, you've received that. If you had a chance to review that, and was it accurate?
Through you, your worship. The traffic impact study, I'm sorry, did you say that we were supposed to submit it to members of council?
No, we had asked the applicant's consultant if they would supply us with a copy of that study so we could have a look at it. And I know that administration said that you've had a copy of that. I just wondered if you've had an opportunity to go through it, and is it accurate?
Through you, your worship, yes. My understanding is that it is accurate, and our engineering department has indicated that they accept the information that has been submitted.
Through you, your worship. Heather, I noted in your report that you said the wall or fence between the residents is going to be five feet nine inch, or, yeah, five feet nine inches. Is that bylaw to a certain height, or is there a possibility with that study coming back for the noise, that it might go higher? I know you said about acoustic materials, it might be cemented to whatever will best to suit the situation.
Through you, your worship, yes. That fence could be a different style, could be a different material, and it could be a different height.
Okay, no further questions from council? Mr. Tanner is here with Dylan, wants to address council as well.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to come see you this evening. To my right is Mr. LaFave, he's the developer. Like I say, first of all, I want to thank administration for their hard work over the last five months, and we've been working diligently to meet all of their requirements since probably September, I think, early September. I'm happy to say that we are in full support of what administration is recommending to you this evening, and we have no qualms with any of the information provided by Mr. Jevonsky. With regards to your question, sir, through you, your worship, about the acoustical fence, we'll have one of our acoustical engineers take a look at what the sound levels are. Obviously, we want to ensure that the fence itself is, fits into the neighborhood, that it is not an eyesore, if you like, and that it's made out of a material that is agreeable to administration and also to the adjacent neighbor. And it can be out of wood, it can be out of concrete, there's a number of different materials. It just has to reach a certain kilogram per square meter requirement to be an acoustical fence. Having said that, some of the other questions or some of the other issues that were raised in the last couple of days by residents, we have looked at numerous sites in the town. This is the preferred location or the approved location from the potential tenant, and so it's not that we haven't looked at other locations, we actually spent quite a lot of time doing that. This just happens to be the site that is best for the proposed use. So with that, we'd be available for questions, and certainly look forward to any. Thank you.
Counselor Hammond?
Worship, thank you. Mr. Tanner, the last, and I don't believe you were here the last time, you may have been. The height elevation is considerable from, you know, from the east to the west side of that property. How are you going to address that?
Certainly through you, your worship. That's a very good question. I know that there's some concrete block there, there's a small retaining wall. What I, when I was here, driving through the town on Wednesday and Thursday of last week for another project, I took a look at that property. What I think needs to happen, and Mr. Jevonsky made reference to it, is that when we come to the final design of the fence, we need to make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing, one, to the neighbor, to the west. And I think what will happen is, the bottom of the fence will be at that retaining wall height, and going from there upward, and then we need to do some plantings in front of that so that we can make sure that the scale is appropriate, and I think that could be accomplished. I'll leave it up to my landscape architects, but I think that could be accomplished with some cedars, with some other hedge, some other softening of that particular wall. But again, it's to make sure that it fits in, make sure the neighbors are happy, and that it looks appropriate for the site, so, yeah.
I think I was making reference to, from east to west, would be the length of the building. You know, there's quite an elevation difference from the east to the west, so would the building be sitting much higher at one end than it is at the other? Or are you planning on digging out the property, or what are your plans?
Through you, your worship, I believe that the servicing drawings that have been submitted to the town, it'll be balancing the site. I'm not 100% sure off the top of my head, but I can certainly take a look at it for you while we have a bit of, if other people come up to chat. Yeah, and what I can tell you through you, worship, is that those servicing drawings have been reviewed by the municipality, they're acceptable, and as a result, we usually look for a cut, fill, balance on the site.
Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Just a quick question here. In discussion, going back to this fencing as an example, would this fencing be installed immediately? Because I wouldn't want to see, in the event that this does pass this evening, I wouldn't want to see any delay. I know we had some issues with another project at a corner of Erie and Sea Cliff there, where it took seemed forever to get this fencing up. And I think, in the event that this does pass, as I mentioned, I think we have due diligence to the neighbors to ensure that this is something that's constructed immediately, at the time of construction, not at a later date down the road. Could you ensure that?
Through you, your worship, I agree with you. Fencing is not something that comes three, four, five, six months down the road. It has to be done at the time of construction, at the time of servicing, and the time of when the landscaping goes in. The construction season is such that I think we're in an excellent position, should council approve this tonight, that I can guarantee that that would go in. Mr. LaFave is sitting here to my right, it would go in at the same time as servicing, so that we don't have a situation like that, because I think that's unacceptable.
Through you, worship, I would be in agreement with that. The landscaping, we'd probably have to hold off, depending on the time, but the wall or the fence, we could put up so that it's not disruption for construction, you know, sight and sound.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, worship. I'm just wondering how much extra light is going to be thrown onto the neighbors, particularly to the west? How much is it, could you describe that portion for me, please?
Through you, your worship, again. Excellent question. With regards to parking lot lighting, we always use, always use full cutoff lighting, and so the idea is that there is shrouds on the light standards, they're at a reasonable height. You don't allow for light trespass to go from one property to the other, and with these shrouds, you can actually point the light in the right location. We go back after installation to ensure that there is no light trespass, and you fine-tune those lights so that it doesn't, for example, shine into the neighbor's backyard. It's one of the things that, it has to be done properly.
Further questions? Okay, if not, then I will open the floor to the general public. If anybody would like to address council, just need you to introduce yourself, name, address, and share your thoughts.
My name's Janet Reeve, I live at 17 Parkdale Avenue. Thank you, your worship and council. One of my concerns is actually a lot of my neighbors, we have heard that there was a traffic study done. But our concern is, was this traffic study done starting on a Wednesday night, Thursdays and Fridays? Especially come summertime, we have tourists, we have our own residents, locals, kids coming from the beach, we have our seasonal migrant workers, they're on the street. It's even hard to make a right-hand turn out of Parkdale on those particular days. Plus, we have increased traffic as in taxis and vans and buses coming from the different farms, bringing their workers in to do their weekly shopping. And there are times when the light is red at Bank of Montreal, and it's backed up past Parkdale, so you can't go anywhere, left or right. So my concern is, and I know some of my neighbors, is was this a full-fledged traffic study, or did they do this? Because even tonight, as a matter of fact, I left my home at quarter after five to get here, partly because of the weather. It took me more than 40 seconds to get out on the street. I, seriously, I timed it, it was almost a full, actually more than a full minute for me to get out onto the street because of the way the lights are. But it's the traffic and the same thing, the delivery truck. Most of these places have a transport. Where is this transport going to pull in to be able to deliver off the goods? And when we have increased traffic with our tourists, especially in the summertime, this coming in and out, like basically the beer store has, that's not going to happen. We're going to have people getting rear-ended at the light because, oh, there's a car coming, I got to boot it, and he's not looking this way because he's watching that car. And it's, the main concern is the added foot traffic, because there is a lot of it, especially on Wednesday, Thursdays, Thursdays and Fridays in particular, and then again on the weekends. And I'm glad you also addressed the lighting issue, because I realize signs are signs, and I live farther up the street, but it's really funny in the summertime, when the whole batch of seagulls come off of Walmart's roof and fly over, excuse me, because of the Bank of Montreal lighting, and they look like they're neon and they've been at some nuclear reactor as they fly over. Because light pollution is a big concern as well. And that's the main thing, is this, this traffic study as to the fact of, there's a lot on those nights, and I'm, especially, like, I come home, actually, I work at Value Village, a lot of times I walk home, I walk to work. But in the summertime especially, I see groups of kids coming from down at the beach. I would, you know, I'm sorry, I would really, really hate to see something happen where, especially, anybody get hit, especially a child. That would be, that would just not be right. But I think, personally, I think a better traffic study, especially on those time zones, would be a better, a better deal before you go ahead with this.
Can anybody answer the traffic study timing, when it was done? Because we don't have those details, so. I know admin does, but I don't know if anybody's got that off the top of their head.
Through you, your worship, when we do traffic studies, one is that we look at the terms of reference with the municipality, we look at what's important, what needs to be studied. That's the first step, is you figure out what needs to be investigated. And then, when we prepare the traffic studies, they're done to TAC standards, which is national guidelines. Usually look at the AM and PM peaks, you look at the busiest days of the week, you look at how much traffic and trip generation there is from the particular type of use, in this case, a drive-through restaurant. That all gets fed into the model, the numbers get crunched, and then it tells you whether or not you have an issue with your traffic and with your road network. I can tell you that we've done that, and we follow these TAC guidelines, they're industry standard, those get reviewed by the municipality, and administration takes a look at that report. What I can tell you is that the report itself says that there are no issues with the trip generation from this particular site, and that it can function in harmony with your existing arterial road. I would certainly say to administration, if they have anything to add to that, that these reports are not, they're not just, you know, scribbled on a piece of paper and just submitted and bullfaded sticks to the wall. There are rules, guidelines to follow, TAC standards. These are highly technical documents, and as a result, they are peer-reviewed by administration. And if there's any irregularities or any additional information required, we are made to fix that or made to provide additional information. And in this particular case, we've submitted, administration is in support of our recommendation.
Okay. Yes?
With all due respect, I mean, I know your jobs are what they are, they're very detailed, but I think maybe an exemption in this case, because yes, you have tax base, and you have this report, this report, and this report, but I think this actually calls for a fully physical traffic study, rather than going on reports, because you know what? Not belittling anyone, honestly, is the fact of, we're only human, and reports are reports, and things can change from yesterday to today to tomorrow, and we can't always rely on something that was done a month ago, or something that's going to be done next week. I honestly think it should be something, possibility of an actual physical over a two, three-week period, whichever, an actual physical traffic study done, instead of relying on a report.
Okay. Counselor Wilkinson?
I think Janet raises a good point when she asks about transports. Could one of you maybe explain that a little bit better? Does Starbucks, do they use a transport to offload their goods, and if so, which road would it come in off of?
Through you, your worship, they use a smaller truck. It's not your WP60, which is, you know, the big trailer with a cab, a smaller truck. With regards to the site access, it would depend on, one, the delivery schedule, and also the location. The site is designed, whether it's for a delivery truck, or whether it's for a firetruck, they're designed to get through the property, and so as a result, if they came in off of Erie Street, they could leave through Parkdale or vice versa. It's designed so that there is not just one way in or one way out, that there's, that there's choice, I guess, for lack of a better word, and that the site functions appropriately. So it could come in from both directions, quite frankly, and the same as a firetruck. Think of a firetruck, that's what we usually design for.
That truck you described, would be the same one that Tim Hortons uses, where it's a shorter trailer? Is that what's?
Yeah, that's my understanding, yes. Thank you.
Counselor Verbiki, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Ms. Reeve, I've been down there, and, early in the morning, to try and get my own feel for the traffic, and it's difficult, especially at this time of year, because, you know, I see the residents coming and going. It's not that I disbelieve their study, but the problem was, you know, you have to put Starbucks into the equation, right? So that's difficult to do, and it wasn't a great deal on the two occasions I was there, and I've talked to some of your neighbors or one specifically, and indicated that I was there. There's not a lot of foot traffic going on there right now, when the weather being what
With regards to the site access, it would depend on, one, the delivery schedule and also the location. The site is designed, whether it's for a delivery truck or whether it's for a fire truck, they're designed to get through the property. And so as a result, if they came in off of Erie Street, they could leave through Parkdale or vice versa. It's designed so that there is not just one way in or one way out, that there's, that there's choice, I guess, for lack of a better word, and that the site functions appropriately. So it could come in from both directions, quite frankly. And the same as a fire truck. Think of a fire truck, that's the, that's what we usually design for.
That truck you described, would be the same one that Tim Hortons uses where it's a shorter trailer? Is that what's?
Yeah, that's my understanding, yes. Thank you.
Counselor Verbeke, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. Ms. Reeve, I, I've been down there and early in the morning to try and get my own feel for the, for the traffic. And it's difficult, especially at this time of year, because, you know, I see the residents coming and going. It's not that I disbelieve their study, but the problem was, you know, you have to put Starbucks into the equation, right? So that's difficult to do. And it wasn't a great deal on the two occasions I was there, and I've talked to some of your neighbors or one specifically, and indicated that I was there. There's not a lot of foot traffic going on there right now when the weather being what it is as well. So it was really difficult. So when you said, yes, the two-week study, I mean, it would really need to be something that you would need to do in the summertime and throw into the equation the Starbucks being there.
Yes.
Speaking of the truck, there's the other thing. Okay, he's mentioning fire truck and everywhere else. And we do have, like, this time of year, we have a town truck that comes through and plows. But is this road, if this is going to be like a weekly basis or whatever, and I don't know what the way of the truck, with, we just had all that done with the sewers and wherever else, is this road capable of having that kind of truck caught basically on a regular basis going on this road, even that short distance?
I would defer to Mr. Sharon on that question.
Excuse me, your worship. Certainly the type of vehicle that the consultant is talking about, the road would be capable of handling that traffic, especially at the volumes for, for delivery.
Okay. No other questions right now? So ask someone else then. Thank you very much. If anyone else would like to address counsel, please come forward.
I'd just like to add to what she was just saying.
Just need your name and address.
Oh, Henry Conrad, 11 Coronation. I've seen buses stop along there and these kids are being picked up. And some of them don't know how to use the sidewalks. If you get a lot of traffic going in and out of that restaurant, I think there could possibly be a problem. That's, I'm not at, at all for this because of the amount of traffic there is in that area. I like to see businesses come in, I'm not against that, but I just really fear for the kids and, and anybody in that area. So I just want to mention the kids.
So these are school buses that are letting kids off on Erie?
They stop along there.
On Erie Street? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? Nope. Anyone else? Oops, I'll just have to push the button there, so.
Sharon Johnston, 12 Parkdale. You do remember it's a dead-end street, one way in, one way out. And the traffic is, is an issue. I know of three accidents in the last year there. Coming out of Walmart and then trying to make turns there. Doesn't seem to matter which way you go, it is, it is a challenge, whether you're coming out of Parkdale or whether you're coming out of Walmart. I brought pictures. Circle K has a fence, looks acoustic, I'm not sure, you know, exactly what that means. But it's a very high fence and I'm sure that's what all the neighbors would like to see go up. It's certainly much higher than what's five foot nine. I can leave them here, but that's what the neighbors would like if, if it does get passed through.
Just leave them over, over here with staff. But yeah, it's the fence, a lot of these things are of great concern to us on counsel as well in the consideration of this. So, and I know these guys are listening and if we push the right buttons, that's what will happen, so. And I couldn't tell you, Mr. Sharon, do you remember if the fencing that went up around the variety store gas station, was it an acoustic fence or just a privacy fence?
I was just looking over at our planner, who is shaking her head no, that it was not an acoustic fence.
Not acoustic.
Though it was certainly taller than, than six feet.
Yeah. And they worked with us quite well on that. I mean, it took a lot of pushing, but we got it done, right? Yeah, so. Anyway, so accidents and fencing. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Okay. Back to us then. Council members, any questions of admin? Counselor Dunn?
Through you, worship. Heather, I was, my question is regarding the president zoning. I understand the two resident, the two lots on Parkdale further back in are R1. But the first two up front, are they not C3? No, the R1 you said, I mentioned?
Through you, worship, yes, they are R1. They, the zoning that's in place represents, or has represented, the most recent use. So at the time of the last zoning by law, I'm assuming that the property was just kept in the category of the use of, that was on the site at that time, which was single detached residential.
But to further this, the, typically, the, the commercial zoning for these type of properties is a C3?
Through you, worship, there are some highway commercial zones along this section of Erie Street as well as the shopping center commercial. But I have some concerns, planning in general, all, all of us in planning had some concerns about some of those uses that are permitted in the highway commercial category. We didn't feel that they were appropriate for this particular property. So we felt more comfortable with the shopping center commercial category, which is actually more restrictive than you would think it is. Primarily retail, restaurant uses and office-type uses. Those are really the majority of uses that are permitted.
And if I further, because I also seen in your report too, something about gas bars under that zoning.
Yeah, yes, a gas bar is a permitted use in the regular shopping center category, but we do not want a gas bar on this property.
Okay. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. Back to the developer on this, if I may. The biggest concern here tonight, I guess we addressed it, and some of the residents are of the concern with the fencing, the light pollution and so forth. Can you really guarantee us, because I'll base some of my judgment on this this evening, that this will go in without absolute delay? That this will be a priority on this project? If you can assure us that, and we will hold your feet to the fire on that?
Through you, worship, the answer is yes. As you know, Mr. Lufave has done development in Essex County. He lives here. I, I'm going to come back to you probably in the next couple of months with another file. The last thing I need to do is, is break my promise. And the answer is categorically yes. And it needs to go in, as I said, it needs to go in when construction happens. It's not something that happens five or six or 10 months down the road. It's got to be done at the time of, of site servicing. Absolutely, 100%.
Counselor Hammond?
Thank you again. We're faced with, I believe, a dilemma, you know? And for those that have spoken here tonight and the others that are here, I think there's no doubt that it's going to increase the traffic. You'd have to be a fool to think that it wouldn't. And the difficulty, at least that I'm facing, and I can't speak for my fellow counselors, is that regardless of what goes on that property, it's going to make and create more traffic on Parkdale, regardless of what it is. And at least I believe that this might, we were very fortunate, I think, to be able to have administration bend their initial thoughts to allow traffic coming in and out off of Erie Street, which will help. I think it'll help tremendously. Because I think if it was something much smaller in terms of an office building of some kind, they won't allow that. Because I know we frown on traffic, as I mentioned the last time we were here, about coming out on Erie Street. And Wave Direct is a prime example of that over here. So we're left with, if we don't allow Starbucks, what do we allow? And is it going to be any more pleasing to the neighbors? Is it going to reduce the traffic anymore? I, I don't believe so. And, and the fact that they've purchased the other two lots and we've already addressed the sound and the lights and that's all done through, you know, through the operating procedures here that we conduct, and it'll be taken care of. But the big thing is the traffic. And I think we all here all understand that there is going to be traffic, problems and delays are. I, I don't know what can be done about it. I, I just, I can't think my way through a solution. I can't. Short of, because as I said, I think regardless of what you put there, it's going to create a lot more traffic on Parkdale and going to make it a lot more difficult to try to get out.
Are there questions, comments? All right, so what are, I'm sorry, Counselor Wilkinson?
I just want to clarify some, are we, we are in the public meeting portion of this, right?
Correct.
We're moving into the next one here in a second, where I think is where I'll give more of my thoughts here after the public meeting. So I just wanted to verify we were in public meeting.
Well, we are in public meeting, but it just all flows together, yeah.
All right. Well, then I feel compelled to give my thoughts too.
Sure.
On, you know. Thank you, everybody, for, you know, giving us your input and it's all been taken into consideration. And I sympathize with the people at Parkdale. It's a nice little road there. You know, quiet, you've had a great run of it there for, unbothered for the last 40, 50 years. But I think anybody buying property over on Parkdale eventually had, have it in the back of their head that development was going to happen over on Erie Street. That is the prime commercial property for us here in Leamington. And any places like Starbucks or any other places like that, of course, they're going to want to locate in those prime areas. So, yeah, I, I'm encouraged by how our planning, I think they did a really good job with this project on trying to, you know, lessen the impact on these residents of Parkdale. So that's going to be reflected on how, I'm in support of the project, I am, and, but that's my thoughts behind it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I have to say that I do agree with Counselor Wilkinson as well. I believe that that entire corridor from pretty much Erie North down to the lake, sooner or later, will all be some sort of commercial property. I think back to the days when I grew up on County Street, that was the end of the, that was the end of the town. There weren't even streetlights past that, but that's going back quite a few years. And from now on, anyone who's going to locate is definitely going to be on the main artery. I also have to agree with Counselor Hammond. Lesser, lesser of a lot of evils, I'm, I'm thinking of a car wash. A car wash could be there and to my way of thinking, that would be a heck of a lot worse than, than a, than a drive-through restaurant. I agree also that you need to be diligent, or we all need to be diligent with the acoustic wall and all the other site plan requirements. We did have issues with the Circle K and we stayed on them. Counsel stayed on admin, admin stayed on them, and, and we eventually got through to what, what we wanted. I can also say Mr. Tanner here is a very, a man with lots of good reputation and good work with the community. And when he tells us it's going to be a certain way, I can tell you that that's going to be the way. I've worked with him quite frequently on different projects here in the community and he's certainly always been a man of his word. And then when we talk about the traffic, quite honestly, that is going to be how it's going to be from this, this time onward. And I think of Walker Road in Windsor. That is a very, very busy road and that is what we are going to have. This is our shopping corridor, this is our restaurant corridor, this, this is just how it's going to be. We can't go back to 1970. Personally, I'd love to go back to 1970 and be what I was then. I can't, and neither can we. This is how we have to move forward. Buses stop on Walker Road daily, hourly, every 20 minutes. This is still, these are things that have been dealt with in communities long before we've had to deal with them, and we will go forward and deal with them accordingly. Buses can be dealt with, traffic can be dealt with, and if we find that there are glitches, we will have to work them out. For us to say no, I, I don't think that that is really an option, to be honest with you, I really don't think it's an option. First of all, it's progress, whether we, we like it or not. If anyone went to appeal it, we wouldn't have any grounds to, I don't believe we would have grounds to, to not go forward. And, and the OMB may very well say it's going to be there anyway. We've done our due diligence, staff has done their due diligence, and we honestly feel that this is something that we think is not going to, it's going to have some cons, but when you weigh it out, there are still more pros. I know we can't satisfy everyone, but I do believe that we're doing the right thing and I will be supporting this.
Okay. Brings it back to me. So it doesn't leave a lot for me to say, other than I was pretty excited when we first had this announcement come to us, that Starbucks was looking at Leamington. It doesn't happen very often for small municipalities like ours. The location threw me off, but the more we got into this, the more we dug into it, and as the deputy mayor and other council members have said, our staff is pretty diligent on stuff like this because they know what our concerns are as council members. And I, I remain in support of this. I know it's not going to make some people happy, but it will make others happy as well. And we do have to consider the entire municipality, not just a singular location. So as, as the deputy mayor said, we have to deal with the issues that will be generated down there. And like Counselor Hammond said, we know it will increase traffic. I know that we are working on potential solutions already, but it will take a little bit of time. I suspect when Starbucks opened, it will be a pretty heavy run to get in there, but I would assume after a short period of time, it will calm down to what would be more of a normal flow. So I'm hoping the traffic input won't be as severe as many of us suspect it will be. And we will keep on top of the developer, the builders, to make sure that all of the necessary items are taken care of, as, remember, you've heard all the members of council up here address tonight. So I will be supporting the motion as well. And in that case, I will put that to the floor for council members. What are your wishes with the recommendation? Moved by the deputy mayor, support by Counselor Wilkinson. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor of that motion? Opposed and carried? Thank you all very much for coming out tonight. The next report coming up is one regarding the Fifth Concession Road Drain, Highway 77 Branch. Luanne?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The recommendation in front of you tonight is to appoint, is, sorry, is for the engineer's report for the change in assessment for the Fifth Concession Road Drain, Highway 77 Branch, as well as changes to the Robert Anderson Drain, prepared by Baird AE and adopted by council under the provisions of the Drainage Act, Section 65, 1, 3, and 4. In the fall of 2017, the owners of 514 had submitted a site plan for a building addition. And in the same timeframe, Highland Mushroom applied to sever .29 acres of land from 705 Mercia Road 5 to be added to the 514 Highway 77 to make their property larger for their development. So the engineer reviewed both drains and determined that the Fifth Concession branch of the Highway 77 does have capacity as long as 514 Highway 77 maintains a stormwater management system and the said drain would be to a one-to-two-year pre-development runoff rate. There is no buy-in fee since this Fifth Concession branch of Highway 77 is actually a brand-new drain that was installed by MTO during the reconstruction, so there is no incurred cost to date. There is an amended assessment schedule provided with the report, and we're stating that all costs with respect to this report will be assessed to the owners of 514 Highway 77. There is no municipal cost to this project either. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Counselor Hammond?
Thank you. Luanne, what are you anticipating those costs to the owners of 514 are going to be?
The engineers are estimating Section 65 report to be around $3,500. So that's what we take in securities upfront.
Thank you.
Moved by Counselor Jacob, support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Carried. Next item, 11.2, is one report regarding Lebo Creek. Luanne?
Yes. This is with respect to appointing Baird AE under Section 78 of the Drainage Act for the preparation of the engineer's report for replacement access and berm on the Lebo and berm on the Lebo Creek Northwest Branch. The owners of parcel Lot Six, Concession Seven, which is the northwest corner of Highway Seventy Seven and Mercia Road Seven, have submitted a site plan application for construction of a new greenhouse and accessory building. During that process, a proposed new entrance was designed, so this has already come to council. I want to say late November it came to you and council approved it for a first and second reading. That entrance is now being reconsidered since ERCA is now reviewing the report. There is an existing entrance on that property, so we're looking at replacing it instead of building the one closer to the highway. ERCA did the review as well and determined that there was issues with stormwater management design and so the engineer needed to take it back for reconsideration. What ERCA is suggesting is that a berm be installed along the Northwest Branch of highway, of this, of this drain, sorry. It'll run along the railway corridor and the engineer will design that in this report that we're asking council to appoint. This project now affects upstream landowners due to the replacement of the entrance. Therefore, it no longer permits administration's approval under the Delegation Authority Bylaw and approval is required by council. Under financial impact, a total deposit in the amount of ten thousand five hundred has been received from the owner to do this extra engineering. The portion of the work that includes the berm is to be borne one hundred percent by the developer. The re-look, reconstruction of the culvert will be cost shared amongst the drainage scheme. This project is not included in the twenty eighteen municipal budget. However, it is expected that the costs assigned to the municipal road will be very minimal.
Thank you. Counselor Jacobs?
I thank you, worship. Just for my clarification, they were permitted a temporary access, correct? Is this where this is going in? On, on that particular piece of property or is it being moved?
Okay, so they did request a new access closer to the highway and their existing access would be their temporary access for construction. That temporary access will now become their main access and they're no longer going to request that secondary access closer to the highway.
Counselor Verpiki?
Where the mayor thinks, I just, once you start getting involved with upstream landowners, was there a public meeting held on site?
No, this is the first step of it, the public meeting will be.
But they will be?
Yes, yes, we have, hold a site meeting thirty days after the appointment of the engineer.
Okay, I'll move it.
Moved by Counselor Verpiki, support by Counselor Jacobs. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to skip ahead here really quickly to eleven point seven. So, we do have a guest here to present to us in regard to the economic adjustment and Ms. Orton, are you going to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's probably most appropriate if we can have our consultant, Mary Ann Love, walk through her PowerPoint presentation. She can give some of the background and go through that portion of the report and then I will present the balance of it through my report and then provide the recommendations at that time.
Okay. It's your show, Mary Ann. Yep. I'll let you turn the microphone on first though, there's, yep.
How's that? Okay. Good evening and my apologies for missing your in-camera session. I would have rather been here than stopped on the four oh one. It was not very great weather, so I really apologize for that. But I'm here now and more than happy to take you through the public session, the, the public report.
Okay, if I could get you, just move that microphone a little bit closer to you.
How's that? I'll be a fine move over here.
It should slide out towards you too though, the base should slide, yeah.
How's that? Can I, can you hear me? Okay. All right. And I'm happy to take questions throughout the presentation if that pleases your worship.
Sure.
All right, so in terms of the municipality's compensation background, we, the municipality undertook a review of the compensation system back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen and they used the McDowell Job Evaluation System. What that means is they, they used the job evaluation rating system that was put forward by McDowell and Associates. And the organization has continued to use that since twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, which is a very positive move. Now, new and changed positions have been evaluated periodically using this tool and the processes that we use to generate the outputs back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. And we also know that the salary grid has been adjusted periodically to address cost of living and market pressures and also having regard to bargaining unit increases at the municipality. And in terms of, of our engagement in this review, we were advised that the municipality wanted to assess and update the current compensation program and ensure that they continue to be legislatively compliant, pay internally fairly or equitably and also to ensure that the program enables the ability to attract and retain top talent, so checking external market competitiveness. So, when we came, came forward, we, we crystallized these particular objectives. Again, checking to make sure that we continue to pay, be compliant with pay equity, pay internally fair and equitably and maintain our competitiveness with the defined pay market. So, the outputs of our exercise this evening would be to come forward with an updated pay policy and a revised compensation structure that meets the elements that have been put forward in the objectives. In terms of an overall summary, just that, it's a general summary. The municipality pays low to the defined pay market, but not in all jobs, all right, just in certain positions. And that wouldn't really be a surprise. There has been a lot of activity in Essex County since this organization undertook the review back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. It's about five years ago. Four or five, I think it's five, of the other local area municipalities did their market review. So, they've done theirs since. So, what happens then is market, the market, even though we're using the same comparators, the market values change. So, it was time, obviously from about a five-year period to go back out and check. But there is a reason then why we have perhaps in some positions just slipped back a little bit in terms of our competitiveness. The recommended twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen salary grid that Ruth has referenced addresses these elements. It addresses internal equity and that's based on, for all the full-time, non-union positions and that's based on the job evaluation results coming from this system, this job evaluation system. We had, we assessed pay equity compliance and I can say that the pay equity impacts that were assessed based on the proposed twenty eighteen job rates, they've been identified and any impacts are addressed on step placement. So, there are no pay equity adjustments per se that need to be made. The, the, moving into the new grid will ensure that pay equity is maintained when all females are receiving or have the female job classes have the same ability to same, to receive the same job rate as their male comparator. We also included non-union part-time and seasonal positions in this, this year's pay equity analysis. We did not include all of the part-time, regular recurring part-time positions last go-around, so that's something new. The part, the twenty eighteen salary grid also incorporates job rates to reflect the fiftieth percentile of the defined pay market just as it did back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. That too is the, the target market percentile. In terms of compensation philosophy, I've just included this slide for councils, just a refresh on terms of councils, the principles that I think that council would want to be mindful of when they're determining pay policy for this, for this employee group. Most councils in the province as well as, as boards that I've had the pleasure of serving are consider, are, are looking at four main principles in compensation, those being fairness, compliance, competitiveness and of course affordability. Now, the fairness is achieved through job evaluation. When we, when we have all jobs of comparable value in the same pay band based on job evaluation scores and we have a common job rate, we can say that we are, are fair and equitable in that respect. Compliance is largely two pieces of legislation now. The Pay Equity Act impacts our compensation programs in the provinces, does Bill One Forty-eight and other aspects, other elements of the Employment Standards Act. Competitiveness is, is demonstrated when we do our custom market surveys using our select group of comparators and certainly affordability is key. We don't have unlimited funds. I have not, have not worked for a municipality yet that has been able to demonstrate that they have. The challenge always for the elected body is to determine how best to use compensation dollars in order to ensure that those other preceding principles are, have been heated. With regards to pay equity, and I believe Ruth would have worked through a lot of this through your in-camera session, but I will just walk through the obligations just at a high level. We know that pay equity is achieved when an organization can produce a deemed approved pay equity plan and we have one here. So, the municipality of Leamington has, has a pay equity plan. It can also be, and it has to be, there has to be an ability to demonstrate that all female job classes in the organization have a, an established male comparator. Now, the legislation, the legislative obligations don't stop there. It also requires employers to demonstrate maintenance of pay equity. We do that through using the same tools and systems that were used to generate the deemed approved plan and, and that to a large extent has been happening at, at Leamington. They were using the tools and systems. However, there were a few jobs that we did need to take a look at just to update those ratings and also we did need to bring in the regular recurring part-time positions into the plan in order to be compliant. Pay equity should be tested every year and that's my best piece of advice and I know that Ruth and staff have undertaken particular regimens within the H R stewardship of the program in order to ensure that, that pay equity will always be maintained. With regards to the particular assessment, as I said, we reviewed the updated job descriptions using the McDowell system. The twenty eighteen pay equity analysis shows that we're continuing to use the same thirteen bands, our bands or, or basically similar value groups which form the basis of a pay equity review and also the foundation for the salary grid. They consist of bands starting at Band A. Now, we've included a Band A because we've had to receive the regular recurring part-time jobs, so we have a Band A. It starts at a hundred and sixty-five points with a twenty-five point spread and each point spread increases by a ten-point increment. That's the same system we had in place back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. That framework doesn't change. If we start to change the framework, that impacts our compliance. So, we just are maintaining what we have. And then we move forward with the analysis and we have no pay equity adjustments and we'll prepare the appropriate documents for file in Human Resources at the conclusion of the project. In terms of market, market competitiveness, we prepared a custom market survey just as we did back in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. That survey was prepared using ten municipal comparators. The market comparator group was selected to reflect the relevant criteria. So, we take a look at geographic placement. Geographic placement's an indicator of, of economic, cost of living and economic conditions in employment. We like to take a look at similar service alignment or like services and also size is an indicator. So, there are lots of indicators of size. Size, I should say, is a criterion, there's lots of indicators of size. So, household population's a good indicator of size, operating budgets, et cetera. The comparators are, are set out here, so would, would not be a surprise. We have all of the local area municipalities in the county as we did last time. We also have used Saint Thomas and Innisville and Stratford as I believe were common in, common, two of the three where I think were, were common, common to the last review as well and we've included the county. So, there's our list of ten. And you can see there's great similarity in the sizes and scope of the local area municipalities here in the county, which is quite unique in the province. We don't often see that degree of homogeneity with local area municipalities within a county structure, but we have that here. And the market review results, as I said, I wasn't exactly, I wasn't surprised when I saw the results and I should say, before I actually get to the results, I might talk a little bit about how I go about deriving those results. First of all, I would say I'd like to re, to underscore that whenever I'm doing market matching for a municipality, I take a very conservative view of the matching. So, if there are outliers, if there are jobs that are, are, you know, they're very high-paid or well, are very low-paid, we take those out from the analysis, we're removing any, any anomalies in terms of driving statistics. So, conservative matching and I believe we have a, a reasonable comparator pool. When we match jobs to municipalities, we take a look at the position here at the, at the municipality and we match the best we can to like positions, similar positions in other municipalities having regard to the duties that they perform as well. So, it's not just a title and title match, we take a look at organization charts and because I have worked with the lion's share of those positions in the local area municipalities here, I have a good understanding of what is a solid and defensible match. We, I matched, excuse me, I did the market review using twenty seventeen job rates because that's when we did the work. We matched our, our positions having regard to both annual salary and hourly wages because not all municipalities have the same hours of work for every position. So, we wanted to get a sense of, of what the data would show on both, on both ends. The twenty seventeen market analysis, as I said, indicates the municipalities' positions in general are paid low to the defined pay market, but there are greater deviations, obviously, in, in certain positions. We, we were able to derive market summary statistics for thirty-eight non-union full-time positions where we had four more observations. So, four more, meaning if we had any more than four, that would be great. Anything less than four was not really statistically reliable. So, anything more than four, we were able to make an assessment on. I also have to say there are never any perfect municipal, municipal comparators and there are never any perfect matches. But as I said, when going through the exercise, we match what we can and we stand on the end result in terms of it being reliable. In terms of the assessment, we see that the municipality is below market based on annual job rates below the midpoint or the median of the market by about two point eight percent and on an hourly basis below the median or midpoint of the market by about one point three percent. And why are those statistics different? Because our comparators have different hours of work, all right? Some organizations have, have run on a thirty-seven and a half hour work week. We'll run predominantly on a thirty-five hour work week with some, with some forty-hour work week positions. So, this is why we, we take a look at both annual and hourly. All right, they, and I think I've explained the last bullet. All right, the, the, I, there are particular bands or positions which are more, are, are, are in need of an adjustment, some more than others, and I can walk through that when, when Ruth presents her staff report because through that report, I believe you'll have the grid in front of you. In terms of the pay policy, the revised salary structure for the employee group includes a job rate that reflects, that's a maximum rate, the job rate's the maximum rate, that reflects the fiftieth percentile or the median for the pay, pay bands that are currently showing below the market median. So, we've just tried to bring positions up to reflect the market median percentile. We think that the market median is still a conservative target. There are other municipalities that are targeting higher placement within the competitive pay market, other municipalities in, in the county. So, in our view, the fiftieth is, is, it's reasonable, it's conservative. Each salary range, you'll see in the band, each salary range has this five-step progression with three, three percent step increases, five, the five, step five is job rate. This, this salary grid framework was the, the output, it mirrors the output of the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen review. It was the same framework. The step progression of three percent is also conservative. It's not uncommon in municipalities to have four percent between each step or five percent. We haven't sug- We haven't suggested that that change either. We are also recommending that the municipality continue with the policy of harmonizing job rates within each band, which just means you're able to then say you're paying internally fair and equitable. If all jobs within the band of similar value are able to ultimately get to a common job rate, we can say we're equitable. All job rates will be pay equity compliant, as we've tested them. We're asking that the organization continue to pay particular attention to some of the job rates for positions with attraction and retention challenges, and you will see that where the market is really requiring us to make some moves on some bands, the reason why that is, is because those positions are, over the last five years, have been really, they've been competitive positions. They've been competitive positions, so other municipalities have had to raise their job rates respectively for those positions as well. We would request that the municipality, we suggest that the municipality continue to maintain internal equity and pay equity compliance, as they have, and steward the process with particular attention on internal band placement of positions on an annual basis, and that the organization adjusts the grid annually, having regard to average projected adjustments provided by the comparator group, so that way we're not going to lose lockstep with our peers, and having regard to published survey projections and bargaining increases awarded locally, and of course, ability to pay. And I think Ruth has outlined that in her report as well. The salary grid and the wage, the revised salary and wage grids, as I mentioned, Ruth has referenced those, they were prepared using 2017 as the baseline. So when we went out to market, we determined that there were particular bands that needed adjustments. We've made those adjustments, built that framework, and then added 2%. And that's what you're seeing for the purpose of recommended 2018 implementation. And we also recommend here, as we have with our other municipal client groups, that implementation costing be based on a next closest step methodology, and that also mitigates the costs and reflects that principle around ability to pay. So in other words, we just move employees into the new grid to the step that is next closest to current pay. And in terms of next steps and future considerations, I think I've covered much of this already, but subsequent to council's decision, if council is going to make the decision to approve the grid, there's obviously some implementation steps to work through in terms of employee communication. We have some housekeeping to do in terms of putting a pay equity plan together for file, just to show that we've got current and up-to-date maintenance in 2018. And I think our HR policies, they may need to be tweaked a little bit, just in terms of some maintenance exercises, et cetera. But other than that, I think we're in good shape. And I think that's it. Then I'll hand it over to, well, subject to any questions I have on my part of the presentation, perhaps Ruth, you'd want to present your report.
Thank you.
Do you want questions first, or do you? Okay, Councilor Burbicki.
Yeah.
Worship, thanks. Don't take this the wrong way, but with your job-to-job method comparison, does that work the other way too?
In which, just so if I-
That, let's say, I've been dealing with lawyers this last week. I know not, this is the truth. So my female lawyer, and you have a male lawyer come up, is he comparable? Now, he get the same pay as that female?
That's internal equity. So that's not the law, but that's your pay policy. So internal equity, back in 2012, 2013, when the report was approved by council, they approved not just being pay equity compliant, being all male, all female jobs had to have that male comparator rate, they approved the principle of internal equity. So yes, this council approved that principle five years ago, for sure.
Counselor Jacobs.
Thank you, worship. I'm glad you made it in safe and sound. It was pretty treacherous out there tonight.
Thank you.
When you did the comparator with the different municipalities, did you do that strictly by population? Or do you take into consideration the economic flavor of it, and the demographics of it, and geographic and so forth?
Well, I think all of that, counselor, is, we look at all of those criteria. So certainly, the local area municipalities here in Essex, the economic indicators are relatively consistent, generally speaking, from a provincially, provincial view. Now, there may be some, obviously, differences between municipalities here that you would see at a local level, but when you're looking across the province, there's a particular economy in this part of the province which would say, you know, these local area municipalities are good comparators one to the other. The size is also pretty close as well, when you're looking at, you know, deviations of a few thousand here and there. So now, there's other comparators that are up the road. So we have Innisville, we have Stratford, and St. Thomas. Now, they aren't obviously in the same geographic area, but they had other, they fit other criteria in terms of, for example, being close to a large municipality, which is our challenge here, we're very close to Windsor, so a larger population, in terms of challenges on attraction and retention in the employee population, and that certainly holds true for certainly Innisville vis-à-vis Berry. It would hold true, I think, with St. Thomas, and perhaps even Stratford vis-à-vis London, or the areas further on to the east as opposed to west of Stratford. So as I said, they're not perfect, but I think this is one part of the province where I do work. I know I work all across the province, where I really feel pretty comfortable with the comparator group because of the size and the economic piece. And I have to say, that group of comparators is common to your local area municipalities. If not the very same, there might be just one municipality that's different. In fact, the very same comparators, I believe, were used in Amersburg. I believe it's the same set. So it's very close. Now, that can give you some comfort in terms of some similarity on comparisons, but it also puts pressure on an organization that hasn't gone out to market in four or five years, when the other municipalities have. And I also know that we're in a part of the province where our employees can quite capably commute to two or three different municipalities from their place of residence, and that doesn't often happen in other counties. So it causes us to be mindful of our challenges and to make sure that we're using our compensation dollars in the most, you know, responsible way, so that we don't pay too much and we don't pay too little. Paying too little causes massive catch-up and will really hit a tax base in any given year, and paying too much is just not acceptable.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. My question is, how many positions did you find not to be competitive that needed to be bumped up? Because I don't believe that tells us anywhere.
Well, I can tell you the bands, and therefore I can probably zero in on the positions, if that might help. I'm not sure if you have that data, but can I try it by band first, and that might, do you have, does council have the grid in front of them?
We do.
Okay, so that might help out, and I do as well. So we found, I'm going to take it from top down, and it might just sort of maybe can assist a little bit. In Band Nine, so you're looking at 11 bands, basically. So from Band, in Band Nine, there is only one job in that band, which was the, is the fire chief. We felt, we saw that position was not competitive, and therefore, in the new grid, you would see an increase. In Band Seven, generally speaking, we found that those positions needed an adjustment. Now, they weren't all not, they were, some were fine and some were not fine. I'm just going to move over to, if you don't mind, I'm just going to have to get out of this, I have to move over to my market analysis. The difficulty is, is that where it is that you have jobs in a band, and some are competitive and some are not. If we start just to pay, if we pay two or three different job rates for the positions in the band, it's going to get offside, you offside two principles. One, we're not going to treat all jobs equitably that are of similar value, and two, you may be offside pay equity legislation if it is that we have increased a job rate for a male comparator and the female didn't need it because of market, but they would need it because of legislation. So, as I said, even though Band Seven is proposed to have an adjustment, not all, not all our jobs are below market. I would say the jobs that are probably least competitive in Band Seven are the deputy fire chief positions, okay, and building services. Quite competitive, those positions in, across province. Also, another position that's least would be planning services, manager planning services, that position as well. In Band Six, the jobs that stand out in terms of market deviations are drainage superintendent and manager of human resources. There are three positions where we just didn't get enough data. As you said, they referenced, four or more observations were needed, so three positions didn't get enough, and the fourth remaining position was relatively competitive. In Band Five, I think we're fine there. In Band Four, I'm, in Band Four, and I wouldn't say in Band Five, all are fine, it's just generally speaking, there are enough deviations, we didn't ask for any, or recommend an increase on the band. Job rate in Band Four, the position that pops out is EA to CAO and mayor. In Band Three, the positions are, that are lower, desktop support, so an IT position and payroll. And in Band Two, fire services assistant. Okay? So I've just kind of picked up the larger deviations to market there. There are others that, you know, those aren't the only ones, but it just gives you a general sense of where the market is pushing on jobs. So fire positions, just to recap, building services, planning, and that is a common phenomenon in municipal sector province-wide.
Deputy Mayor.
So then, those are all the positions that were bumped up?
Well, they are positions that are sitting within a band where we have recommended the job rate increase, and I would strongly recommend that we don't, as I said earlier, that we don't just increase the job rate for the positions that are flagged as not competitive. As soon as we do that, you have, we have gone offside, the principles approved by this council back in 2012, 2013, which is to pay all jobs that are of similar value through job evaluation placed in a band, a common job rate. It starts to take us away from a grid structure that we have today. Is there anything else, Ruth, on that? Did I hit them? Okay.
Okay, Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you, worship, but those were my questions as well, what the deputy mayor just had, she just answered them perfectly for me. Thank you.
Counselor Hammond.
Your worship, thank you. And, Miss Love, it's nice to see you did make it. We had a pretty healthy discussion earlier on tonight, as you can imagine. A couple of questions, and I'm glad to hear that we're in compliance with pay equity, and also too, that we're in compliance with the mandated legislation, you know, so it brings me to my question. You had indicated that you know of other five communities or other five municipalities that either have conducted this exercise recently or are about to. Are you involved, or your company involved in those as well?
I have been over the years, yes, yes.
So to my point, we go through this exercise, and, you know, and I've said this earlier, so I'll say it again, and we use the information you brought forward, because you compared us to the list of other ones that are listed on the back. If your firm goes to Kingsville next year, does a pay equity or not a pay equity and exercise there, you're going to use Leamington as a comparator. Year after that, if your firm goes to De Cumpsey, you're going to use Kingsville and Leamington as a comparator. So to my point, five years from now, you'll no doubt be back here again and using us and using all those other people as a comparator again. So when did this, how does this evolution ever stop? I mean, I understand the importance of paying our people the appropriate amount of money, but how does this evolution ever stop? We're always comparing, as you pointed out, good people who can travel very easily up and down the road to another location. How do we stop that from happening?
Well, with respect, counselor, I don't think it does stop. If it weren't, if it weren't me doing the work, it would be another provider, and if they were going to use a custom survey, which frankly gives you more reasonable, reliable data, because of who, because of the way we are set up at the, and the size of population and of proximity at the County of Essex, I think probably whoever does the work will always use the other local areas as part of the comparator pool, so regardless whether it's me or not. I think that the best practice out there across the province, because I, and I do work across, you know, east, west, and up into the north, is looking at market about every four or five years, just as you have, all right? And now, market comparators can change, but they don't often change. So you might lose one, might add one, but generally speaking, you look at a custom comparator pool, or a custom pool. So as I said, I'm not sure that it ever stops. I think the key is, what does the market tell you? And what are you going to do with the market? And what can you do with that market? And what do you think the risk would be if you don't? And in our sector, we have not had freezes, at least for a long period of time, whereas other parts of the municipal, like other parts of the public sector have. Now, of course, they're doing catch-up, but it's just, we've been, we've been paying, and it's been tough on the tax base. I appreciate it.
Well, exactly, so, exactly. So to your point, how does it stop? Because we're always comparing municipalities one against or one to the other. So as I said, it's an evolution, and I, when I said your firm, I didn't, obviously, I didn't just your firm, it could have been any firm, but, so, you know, and we have been very fortunate here that we have moved people. I mean, the banning that, and I believe your firm set this up a number of years ago, the banning that you've established for it has been a good guideline for us to move forward, because we've moved people throughout the bands, and throughout the years of service, you know, through the different steps, when their job titles have changed and their, you know, their workload has increased. So we've done that. So I guess to my point is, you know, and over and above that, and I made this point earlier, is that the steps that you're showing here all indicate a 3% spread, but also too, that doesn't take into account the 2% that we also tack on every year as a result of that. So some of these salaries grow extremely high incrementally over the years, and I know it happens everywhere, and I guess that's the point.
Yes, it does. It does happen everywhere, counselor, well, in other municipalities, and as I said, it's a matter of, I guess, acknowledging that and figuring what is the best thing to do, given the information you presented with. So elements of conservatism, I think, are important to grab hold of, and I've tried, you know, I don't think I put too fine a point on it. I've tried to underscore what they are. Your percentile, 50th percentile is an element of conservatism. The matching that I've, and your comparator group, it's a reasonable comparator group. We haven't chosen, we haven't put in, say, the city of Windsor or larger, large urbans. It's relatively reasonable and conservative. My approach to matching is conservative. I've worked in this sector for 30 years, and I haven't come across a council yet that has lots of ability to put what they want on, as much as they would love to pay their employees more, it's a struggle, and it's a matter of trying to do the right thing. The, I think the band placement itself, I think when we're looking at that, we also made sure, to your point, jobs can move up and down, we tested that to make sure that jobs were in the appropriate pay bands. So I think that the best I can offer is the approach that I've taken to the assignment and to the project, and understand full well that, I know it's a difficult decision, the difficulty I had experienced with other councils is when the pay policy isn't maintained, even as conservative as it is, and it start, the organization legs, then there is a catch-up to do. And that's very difficult in a particular election, whether it's election year or it's the year after the election, it's difficult for a new council to have to walk into. So I think I could leave it at that.
Counselor Dunn.
Through you, your worship. Mrs. Love, my question is regarding Band Six, because you said that you want to keep all the bands in the same pay grid. And Band Six here shows two different wages.
I think it's because, if I can, your worship, I'm just going to call the grid up, but I believe it's because we have different hours of work, right, Ruth? Yes, thank you. I just had to get it in front of me. Yes, so when you, counselor, through you, Mr. Mayor, if you're looking in Band Six, you'll- you'll see down the column that says hours, you'll see 1820 and you'll see 2080. The reason, so the reason why you are seeing, and then at the very bottom of that band, you'll see hourly. So, when you look at the hourly rate, all right, just before the line, you see that? If you see the hourly rate and you multiply that hourly rate by the annual hours, 2080 or 1820, you're going to come up with those numbers. Okay?
Okay, I just wanted to jump in before I go to the deputy mayor. There were a couple of things that you said during your talk, which makes me feel comfortable. One thing that I do want to notify you of, which maybe you didn't know, is we did have two years of pay freeze here, the year that Hines announced that they were leaving Leamington. So, we did freeze our wages here.
I wasn't aware of that.
So, would that have contributed to some of the adjustments we have to make? Like you said earlier, we're now, we have to catch up to what we delayed.
Well, yes, Mr. Mayor, it could well have attributed to that, and I really, I guess I wasn't really working closely with the organization, and so I, and now that I do remember then leaving, and now I understand what was done. Yes, that can certainly attribute. Interestingly enough, though, not all positions are under market by, you know, the two years worth, so, but it certainly does contribute to some of the gaps, plus some of the other, you know, the other municipalities doing their work. But it does give council a sense of what a catch-up feels like.
Yeah.
That's a bad, that's a bad pun with Hines.
Yeah, I know. I said it earlier, and I thought the same thing.
I'm sorry.
Add the ing, the catching up.
Catching up feels like, thank you, yes.
Yeah. You know, like, I've always been a self-employed person, so when I look at the wages that are paid in the public sector, this sector, right, it's always been hard for me and my father and family members and other business people to look at it and say, wow, wouldn't it be nice if we could pay that much or earn that much? And I think that's what the general public looks at, too. But the one thing that you keep saying, or it's, and it's in your report, that gives me a little bit of comfort on this, is the 50th percentile. So, we're middle of the pack. And when I hear some of the other municipalities in our area are 55 or 65, it's, either they do have a lot of money or they're reaching a lot to get those quality employees to come and work for their municipalities. So, it gives me some comfort to be in that middle of the pack, that we're not overpaying and we're not cheaping out either. So, from that perspective, I'm okay with it. It's just, it's just hard, because these are sizable incomes. We look at our municipality, and our CAO and I talk frequently, and the issues we have with our fellow county council members. Leamington is one of the, well, it's actually the poorest municipality when it comes to household incomes, and CVAs, we're the lowest out of the entire seven municipalities. And sometimes it's a substantial difference, and those that are much higher than us are the ones who are paying into those higher brackets. And I think that's where maybe some of us have difficulty, too, we're looking at this. Okay, and you mentioned affordability, but then I bring myself back to, well, we're still middle of the pack, so maybe we're okay. I don't, I just throw that out for quick comment.
Well, I think those are good observations, and it tells me, you know, you're sharing with me and the rest, sort of your ruminations in terms of how to reconcile these four principles. And it's difficult. It's one, it's tough, and it's one of the toughest decisions, I think, that councils have. I mean, it impacts your operating line considerably, and the impact of not doing the right thing has future repercussions, which I'm sure you can appreciate. So, I, I hear you, Mr. Mayor, and I think that you're thinking, my view, my humble opinion is on the right track, in order to be able to get to where you need to be as an organization.
All right. Deputy Mayor?
And I was going to ask if you were aware that our average income is below the Ontario average, and that's what we are all struggling with. You know, and I looked at your four points, fairness, compliance, competitiveness, and affordability, and what comes up to me, and this is just my, not, no disrespect at all intended, but I think of the times when our negotiators come back to us and tell us that our union people are quibbling over dollars, and that's when we hold affordability as that number-one pillar. And that's always, we all know that. We sit in that room over there and we hear what the contract negotiations are, and affordability is always what we sink our teeth into. And then when we talk about our non-union people, then all of a sudden affordability slips to the bottom of the pile and competitiveness goes to the top, and that's what I find really, really hard to swallow. If we're going to be fair, then affordability will always be the top, not only top when we're talking union, and then the other comes to the top, and that's what I'm hugely, hugely struggling with, with this. And when our average income is at the $40,000 mark and we look at these wages, it's really, really hard to sell that. So, that needs to be said. I mean, in an ideal world, we could do this, but it's not an ideal world, and our rate payers that are making the $40,000 are footing this bill, and that's what's so hard for all of us sitting up here. So, so to just, you know, say it's about being competitive, for me, the affordability is, is what's at the top of the pile. So, I felt you needed to know that. We're not disrespecting your work in any way, and the fact that, the fact that we're heavy-hearted, like, this is heavy-hearted for me. I feel like there's a huge weight on me over this. But I felt you needed to know that.
Well, I appreciate that, Madam Counselor. It's really, it's not my decision. My responsibility is to bring you the data, and I think put a lens on it that I think is appropriate for this council, and I think the lens I've put on it, I've underscored a lot here, and that is an element of conservatism, which will help, I think, in some part to meet your challenges. I appreciate that, but ultimately, it's council's decision, and my job will have been done.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, Your Worship. And Mary Ann, thank you for coming tonight. I know the weather's terrible out there. Thank you for trudging through. My question is in regard to that 2%. 2% is derived from negotiations with our union staff, and that's kind of the way the deputy mayor was leaning there. I'm looking over at my union staff, and they'll be paying attention to this. 2% was derived after negotiations. I wonder, was there any concessions that were given up by the union to get to that 2%? The reason I ask that is, we are given here just straight up 2%, whereas the union, they got their 2%, but they might have given up concessions at the same time.
Okay. Mr. Neufeld?
First, the consideration for non-union adjustment does look at the increases that were negotiated with our unions, but it's not necessarily equivalent just because of what you had said. There are not, I don't remember there being concessions, but certainly, an increase, for example, of one and a half percent at the union level went along with some improvements in benefits, which would have an equivalent of 0.5% for example, whereas in the, in the non-union section, it is a straight economic increase where there weren't any improvements in benefits. So, it's kind of the same story, but done on the other side. When we look at these things, we look at a number of factors. The cost of living is one, what the unions negotiated is another, but it is not a, it's not a matching program, because each union has their own set of negotiations and make improvements that have a cost benefit or a cost to them, and we haven't seen that on the, on the non-union side. There are no improvements in benefits at all that go with the 2% proposed.
Thank you, Peter. Yeah, and like I say, the union staff, I'm sure, are going to catch one to this, they're going to be paying attention to it, and it is going to be hard to justify at times some of the more aggressive increase to the pay bands here. I'd have a hard time explaining that, because there was a little bit of, you know, bad blood left there after our last negotiations. They felt like they fought tooth and nail for that 2%, and then they're going to look at this, they see the 2%, but they also see these, sometimes pretty generous increases to the pay band. It's hard to explain to them at that point.
And I guess, Counselor, I would go back to what I mentioned earlier, is we did two years of pay freezes here in the non-union staff, and that wasn't necessarily true of the union staff. There was one or two of the, one of, one of the three that took a freeze as well, and the others didn't. So, I mean, two years of, one didn't?
One did, the rest did.
The rest, two did and one didn't. So, I mean, still, we're trying to get caught up, right? And I guess we could have gone four and four, you know, rather than 0022222, whatever it's going to be in the future. So, I mean, I don't know that during budget deliberations, any of us had difficulty with the 2% increase. Now, we're looking at the salary grids, and I get where we're all coming from, I think we've all kind of said it, deputy mayor and I for sure, and so, I understand everybody's apprehension on this. I'd just like to go back to Ruth now, if I could, or, wait a second. Well, who would that be? Who did that part of report? The annual incremental costs of the 2018 proposed? Is that you, Ruth? That was yours, right? So, when I start looking at that number, and I forget what, let's see, that's on page, where is it?
Page?
Eighty-two of ninety-five? So, breaks down what the real cost of the wages and benefits are for 2018, 19, 2020, 21, and 22, so the next five years, basically, based on this report.
Yes, and that is considering the increase due to the market analysis only. So, that would not be in consideration of any other economic adjustment.
Okay. Mr. Neufeld?
Just to further address Counselor Wilkinson's point with respect to the unions, every two or three years, depending on what the term of the contract was, when we negotiate with the unions, one of the important components that they bring to the table is their comparators to other municipalities and what others are paying. In other words, every two or three years, they get to bring their market analysis of their jobs to the table for negotiations in the same way that we do with the non-union.
So, I'm just looking at Ruth's report here, even those numbers, knowing that we're giving the non-union staff a 2%, and there are some adjustments in the grids and positions, very few, my understanding. And we came in with a 1.8% budget, right? Tax increase. So, to me, it, in my own personal opinion, you guys can take it for whatever you want, I'm looking at what we've done, what we've approved in our budgeting, and in considering the affordability, which we all keep talking about, and we've done it, and we've reflected all of those costs, correct, in our 2018 budget with a 1.8% increase. So, to me, it seems like we've accomplished our goal, but anyway. Ruth?
If you'd like me to walk through that, the financial impact section of my report, because it does lay out how this was incorporated into the budget that council did see. As we indicated, that 2% economic adjustment was incorporated into the wages within each individual budget, and that incremental increase was approximately $128,000. There is $5,000 that relates to the small part-time increases, and there is $91,000 that relates to the increases due to the market adjustments that Mary Ann spoke to. It also, like I indicated, that's the phased implementation of adjustments that would be made to the individual positions. Because it is proposed at effective January 1st, employees be paid at the job step rate with the relevant, within the relevant pay band as set out in the salary grid that is closest to the employee's 2017 rate of pay adjusted by 2%. So, some pay bands, as they receive those adjustments, it's going to put the employee within a different step than he or she otherwise would have been had there not been an adjustment. And in order to implement the salary, that salary increase within this year, they would be put into that, at that relevant step, and I've included an example within the report, because as administration, when we were preparing the budget, understood that we may not be able to implement this salary review all within one year, and that is not the case. So, it would be a phased implementation. And the same indication, the same process would follow for those positions that received a change to their pay band, the same application would apply. As I indicated, that implementation is recommended in consideration of the 2018 budget provision of $100,000 that was incorporated into the 2018 budget. With the implementation of the revised grid, the cost, including base wages and benefits, is estimated to be $91,000 in this first year. The average change by position is 1.6%, and that would be on top of the 2% economic adjustment. The 2018 budget also included wages for staff on a progression at the revised rate based on the existing salary grid, and that was included within the budget at $28,000. So, there was those positions that, because of the timing of their hire, they're still progressing through those five steps, so $28,000 was already allocated in the budget for that change in progression. So, you did reference, Mr. Mayor, the chart that was included in the report that speaks to the balance of that implementation and the cost within the next five years. And as I indicated, that's the cost of the adjustment due to the market analysis and is not in consideration of any economic adjustment beyond that, that council would consider on an annual basis. So, with that, and with Ms. Love's presentation, the recommendations are contained within the report. You have a copy of the 2018 salary grid that's attached as an appendix to my report. The recommendations are that that proposed salary grid be approved, be effective January 1st, 2018, that there be a 2% economic adjustment to the CAO, council, members of the committee of adjustment, Leamington Police Service Board, the Union Water Joint Board of Management to that remuneration, and that that adjustment be effective January 1st, 2018. Of course, those are all positions outside of the salary grid, however, they're typically the positions that also receive that economic adjustment annually that council considers. There be a 2% economic adjustment to the wages of those part-time and student positions that did not receive an increase due to the amendment to their pay policy, which occurred at the end of last year. I looked at two articles within the pay policy, Article B, and I provided the rationale in the report. That section was already repealed from the part-time pay policy. It was, for some reason, also repeated within the full-time pay policy, however, it's not applicable to full-time. So, I would suggest, just as a housekeeping measure, that that article be repealed. And then I indicated Article E of the pay policy. Currently, our policy suggests that council consider only two factors when it considers those annual economic adjustments. You'll see in Ms. Love's presentation, she indicated that her recommendation was, would be that council consider a cost-of-living adjustment to the non-union staff grids, but have regard to the average of the comparator group, the published survey data, bargain increases, and the increases, and the ability to pay, and that adjustment be effective annually in January. So, subject to any questions.
Okay, thanks. So, again, I just look at it, if we're in the 50 percentile, we're, I think we're, we're in a good spot. We've, we've been very fortunate, several of us on Council, to have had some very, very excellent staff members on board, and I think this Council is extremely lucky to have the staff members we've got right now. And if we're gonna keep them, we better pay them. So, I, I guess I'll just put it on the floor, then. What are Council's wishes? Counselor Jacobs?
Ruth, you just mentioned, like, maybe I was a little confused, but 1.5% per year effective January the first, is that what you're referencing? Is that an automatic 1.5% year after year after year, or that's just this year that you're looking at?
It was a 2% recommended economic adjustment prior to any consideration of market adjustment. So, coming into, coming into the budget, administration considered what would be a reasonable economic adjustment for 2018, and that was built into the budget at 2%. But each year, annually, Council must consider what kind of an adjustment it should make, and based on those considerations contained in, in Ms. Love's report, consider those factors and determine what is appropriate for that coming year.
Okay, I was a little bit confused. I thought your recommendation was going to be that that was gonna be a, a continuous one. Thank you very much. My, my, my problem, I...
Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. This encompasses both the 2% as well as the incremental step grids. Is it, if, is it possible to separate those two, or do we need to vote on, on this in its entirety first, either pass or defeat it, and then make a recommendation for something different?
Ruth?
When this was before Council in 2013 to consider, it was based upon the grid, which is based upon our salary review and salary administration program. So, as Ms. Love, to her point earlier, to, to vary from that grid would be, would be dangerous, and I'm not, I'm not really sure what you're asking, because the grid as, as presented incorporates the 2% and incorporates the market review. So, it's, it's all encompassing, and those are the, the salaries that are being put forward for consideration.
Counselor?
Maybe to better clarify, I'd like to separate the grid from the 2%.
Mr. Neufeld?
So, Counselor Hammond, are you suggesting that the 2% adjustment be only at the final step? Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
No, not at all. I'm suggesting that all the, all the employees receive the 2% January first of this year, and, and not the grid, not adopting the grid process, at least at this point.
Okay, so, just to, so I can restate it, just so I, I understand, that the market analysis that was completed would not be implemented, but rather just a 2% increase across the board, is that what you're suggesting?
And are you suggesting that nobody moves up the grid too, as well, if they're entitled to?
No, no, the, the grid is already there for the progressions, but I'm suggesting that, in, in the grid, I'm suggesting that the 3% that's attributed to each, each step of the grid doesn't take effect. However, 2%, the old, the old stays in place.
So, then nobody moves up the grid?
Well, it, it depends, because we've already noted earlier on that some people are already at the top of that grid already.
Correct.
Where if you have somebody new, they would, they would go through the, the current, the past grid without the increases of 3%.
Mr. Neufeld?
Okay, again, just for clarification, so we currently have five steps. If somebody is at their third step and are entitled to move to the fourth step, the, that is the equivalent of approximately 3% increase. Are you suggesting that they, those who are in that position would not receive also the 2% increase?
I'm suggesting they receive the 2% and not the 3%. But, you know, it's a bit complicated, Peter, because, yes, they're entitled to work their way through the progressions. So, how do you currently do it? I mean, what progressionary steps are in there now that, that they adhere to?
What you, what you see is exactly how this works now, is that if somebody, and it has been the same for years, that if they're at step two and entitled to move to step three, and there is an economic increase of 2%, they move up, and the step is also increased 2%. It is to keep the, because otherwise, what you could end up have happening in the end is the entry positions at the, at the lower steps, if they are not attached to the 2% increase each year, then they, those lower steps will be left behind. New employees will be coming in at a much lower rate than the market rate, and attracting new employees will become almost impossible. It, it won't, you won't be able to do it. So, that's why the 2% is necessarily attached to each step, to keep the, keep the grid workable and, and the, and the difference between each step the same.
Then, then keep the grid system in place and just add 2%?
And, and I guess I go back to, that's what I was trying to describe, is that the grid system and adding 2% to the existing grid would necessarily take out the, any of the market survey adjustments that were brought forward?
Yeah.
And, and I, I'm just saying that for clarification, that's, that's what you're suggesting?
Yes, and I, and I think, you know, I understand where I'm coming from, because right now, we're looking at 3% plus an additional 2% with the cost of living allowances taking place, we're looking at a 5% increase in each, each step of the grid.
Well, it's a 5%, it's a, it's a 3% from step to step for anybody who is in that timeframe, plus the 2% increase. I, I understand that's 5%. For those people who are working their way through the progression... But as Ms. Love indicated, the market survey was particularly focused on those positions that are of a very competitive nature. For example, the positions within building inspection. There are communities, even within Essex County, that cannot find building inspectors. The drainage superintendent type position is also another position that other municipalities are looking for, and they can't find them. That is what, that is what this market analysis has done. It has found those positions that are quite competitive and is ensuring that we are paying those people an appropriate amount as it relates to the market. My concern would be, is that the very people who are most marketable out in, in our county and the other municipalities, surrounding municipalities, are the very ones who would be affected by what it is that you're suggesting. And so, it puts us behind the eight ball if, in fact, we start losing some of our staff because we are no longer competitive. And that, that's exactly what the market survey had done. It didn't raise everybody up, it looked for those positions that were particularly competitive. I, even, even the deputy fire chief, if I remember correctly, I've seen some of the advertisements in the paper for, from our surrounding municipalities have significant increases attached to them. That's what the market study was supposed to do, it's, it's focused on those jobs, those positions that are quite competitive. If, if you think back in 1998, 1999, some of the most highly demanded people were the IT people, because we were all going to stop working because of the year 2000 rollover. The IT component is still important, but now we're talking about things like drainage superintendent and building inspectors, where the climate change has begun to take effect, stormwater management, building, our drains, these are the people that are very highly, in high demand right now, and what Ms. Love's report is showing is that these are the ones that we're trying to address.
All right, then, so, to your point, first of all, I mean, it's difficult for us to go through this, because we don't know where the employees stand in the grid system. I mean, we, we know what, what group they're in, but we don't know what step they are on the progression of things. So, we don't know where to, where to allocate some of these peoples. But, but let's talk about an individual, for example, that's in, oh, not the fire chief, but in Group Six, the drainage supervisor. If they're already at level, level four or level five, the top, top level, they're gonna get 2%. And what are they gonna get next year?
Whatever we decide we're going to award.
But assumingly, it's 2%. So, those are the good people, the people that have been here, well, assumingly, for four or five years, that are going to continue to get 2% a year for the next, until we go through this exercise again. But the person that comes on board as a new drainage supervisor would start at the low rate, but would, would get 5% a year until they reach that level.
But...
So, in terms of trying to retain the good people, you're still only gonna give them 2%.
That's why I would apply for the job, though. If I'm coming in at, at stage one, I'm looking at stage five, that's what I'm working towards. So, I know that every year that I put in good, good work, I'm getting that next pay.
5%, but if you're already at the top level, and those are the good people that we've got, assumingly, and they're still with us, why do they only get 2%?
Well, but I think that's when we come back five years from now and do the market comparison, and that wage where it is right now is probably...
But five years from now, they will have already gone...
The, the, these steps are in recognition of an increase in knowledge and expertise and being able to do the, the full amount of the job. When, when we do job evaluations or even job, when we are going out for, for job descriptions, one of the components is how long will it take a person to learn this job? So, there, the steps are in recognition of greater understanding, greater knowledge, better job. So, those steps recognize that component. The 2% is more recognition of things like the cost of living increases. When you get to the top, top rate, that is the job, the job rate. The only thing that's going to change at that point is going to be cost of living type improvements, unless the market changes and your job happens to become incredibly demanded in other areas.
I've got Counselor Jacobs first.
Thank you, worship. Along your comments, Peter, it's not necessarily, if I say I'm a drainage superintendent and I apply for a job, and I've got 30 years of experience, and I'm top in my field, I'm not, you're not gonna start me, or I wouldn't accept the job at step one, you might start me at step five right off the bat, correct? So, it's based on the type of knowledge. I'm not an intern coming in, and, you know, this is my first year at the rodeo, so, so, I mean, all that's taken into consideration. So, I guess, looking at this, if you start at the top, you're not going anywhere else, and you get your 2% per year. So, you're not really looking at the three as well. Am I on track with that?
That is, that's correct, and for many, many years, many of these positions have been held by what are affectionately known as our baby boomers, and it is no secret that there are mass retirements that are occurring, not just in the private sector, but in the public sector as well. The municipality of Leamington has already had a number, if I would say even significant retirements, and we have brought in a, a number of new employees to fill those positions, and those employees are the ones who are in step two and step three as they work their way through the progressions. That being said, other municipalities are now beginning to experience the retirements of their people, and they are looking around to say, where can we find people to fill these positions? That's why you don't leave the progressions in the middle without the economic adjustment as well, because you become very quickly uncompetitive and start losing your people, people that you've spent money recruiting, people that you've spent money training, and people that fit with the culture. And I might even say, that might be one of the most important things, is people who fit with the culture. Trying to find people who fit in, again, is a very costly exercise, very costly. So, but to your point, yes, if, if we can find somebody who has years of experience and, and, you know, has 25 or 30 years' experience with a municipality in a particular job that we have open, and we think that that's a good fit, yes, we will bring them in at the top rate, and all they will be entitled to is 2%. My point is that those people are going to become fewer and fewer and further between because the retirements are happening, and they are coming.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, what you just said about the culture, I, I do believe that people also work here based on the fact that it's a good place to work, based on the fact that we have a good culture, based on the fact that we have an actually workable council. I'm thinking of certain communities in this county, I'm sure you couldn't pay people enough money to go work. So, it isn't always about the dollar, it isn't always about that, and, and I, he's not, sorry, Counsel Hammond, he's not talking about getting rid of the grid, he's saying, stay with the 2017 status quo, take this report, yes, we may use it at some point in time, just not this time, and just give a 2% increase. We're not having people leaving in droves. People have come here because it's a good place to work, we're paying a fairly decent wage. If they were leaving in droves, I would say you have a point. We're not at that point yet. We have the, the salary review, we, we can still go back to it, but at this point in time, I believe, and I'm, I'm not, I'm agreeing with him, I'm agreeing with Counselor Hammond, just put the 2% increase in place on the status quo wages, and, and still implement the, the, the grid as it, as it was previous to this change.
Okay, so, you, that's where you two lose me, because I've been here for three or four years now, and I'm qualified, just because I've been here and I'm doing great work, to move up to my next amount.
That's fine, follow that. As of last year, as of 2017, we had this, and that's another thing that's bothering me, I would have liked to have seen, and even if it was enclosed council, I would have liked, or enclosed meeting, I would have liked to seen what those, what those wages went up, the ones that were the non, deemed non-competitive, and how much they went out. We never found that out, for whatever reason. I would like to have seen that. We're not changing any of that, we're saying, stay with the status quo as of 2017, don't implement the, the new changes, the salary review, and just apply the economic adjustments. So, so if you were making...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two dollars a ye, uh, we, an hour, sorry, seventy-two dollars an hour last year, as of December 31st, as January first, January first, seventy-two dollars plus your 2%. That's all we're saying. We're not change, saying change the grid, we're just saying, keep doing what we've been doing. At some point in time, we may...
You're gonna hold me back here?
No, why?
Yeah, 'cause I, I was making 72, now I should be at 74.
Okay, well, you're following your grid, but then, whatever the, whatever, still keep the grid increments, but based on 2017, then just, what? Pardon? No, you're not. I'm talking about the not, the not, the non-competitive people... I'm talking about the noncompetitive people that we changed, don't change them. Leave everybody the same as they were, and their increments would come in the 1st of January, as we would have done had we not had this salary review. I don't see that it's that difficult to understand. I'm just saying, don't implement this current grid. Show me the grid that you had in 2017, and put the 2% on top of that. So if you were eligible for Step Four, you still get Step Four, plus your 2%.
So you still get the 3% increase and the 2% increase, but based on 2017 dollars?
Yes. And then, if we find that we are losing people, we have the document, we can go back to it. At this point in time, I'm just not prepared to do that. Much the same as that 1% increase proposed on the HST. No, I don't want to put, I don't want to put our residents on that right now. And that's the same as this. People are worth it. You can say that all you want, but I'm looking at affordability. Of those pillars, my most important pillar is affordability. It's not competitiveness. Should that change in two years, I'm more than willing to make competitiveness my top pillar, but at this point in time, it's not.
Ruth?
Just a point about the market analysis that was conducted. Going back to it two years from now, I don't think would be reasonable. You would have to redo the market analysis, because those factors could certainly change that would impact upon it. So I just wanted to make that point. The work was done this year for implementation this year. To use it two years from now wouldn't be, in my opinion, reasonable or feasible. And I guess, just to go to a point that council makes quite often regarding our facilities and our equipment, and the importance of a maintenance program for facilities and equipment and maintaining our facilities and equipment, so that several years down the road, when you haven't maintained them, you have a big expense. And I think, again, back to Ms. Love's comments, that's what happens when you don't maintain a salary program, that you can maybe forego maintenance over a period of time, but eventually, that program needs to be caught up, and that's when the big expense would happen. Now, I understand, and I can certainly hear where council is coming from, saying, we have a municipality where people have low incomes, it's difficult for them to pay the taxes that we ask of them. However, I think it's also important to look at, in light of our budget, that this is a $91,000 expense. The other expenses were incorporated within the budget as well. And you have that progression within your report, you can see where it's going to go over the next five years. You can certainly put that in perspective. However, my caution to you is, the maintenance of our salary administration program is just as important as the maintenance of our facilities and our equipment.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, Worship, and thank you, Counselor Hammond and Deputy Mayor McDonald, for, you know, I struggled with this report here this week, and I found it hard to read, it didn't make sense to me lots of times, but what you're saying, I appreciate. I kept on coming back to this most of the week, and I thought, this is where, you know, all the people that come up to us and complain about their taxes in Leamington here, they feel like Town Hall doesn't, loses touch with the common residents out there. And I think this is kind of an example of that. They just don't relate to the, you know, the data that's being put out there with this market analysis. And I agree. I like, I like the way you put it, Deputy Mayor, leave it a status quo, award the 2% same as the union staff got, and we take everything into consideration that Mary Ann has given us here tonight, and Ruth and Peter. But, no, I'm more inclined to support what Counselor Hammond and Deputy Mayor McDonald were suggesting.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Worship. Nobody here on council thinks that, I mean, we all respect administration hugely in our community. We really respect everybody and what they do. But I too agree with the, going with the 2017 rates and with the 2%, at this time, maybe reviewing it in a year. The fact that the actual maintenance, we're doing a lot of maintenance on a lot of the other features, we're spending money in our community, we are investing, and at this point in time, I just, I can't see it. I have to, that's just the way I feel, sorry.
Well, again, in defense of the recommendations on here, we've already built all of this into our budget, and I don't understand the hesitation now to move ahead. I really don't. We either pay our people, or we lose our people. And I think this is a very, I get it, but I think it's a very backward step, and I think it's a dangerous step. But it will be council, majority of council, that makes that decision. So if there are no more questions or comments, then I will call a question. There is a recommendation before us.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Worship. You say this 91,000 is already in the budget?
Yep. 1.8%? Everything's in, yes?
Plus the 2%.
Everything?
I can indicate that everything that was in this report that has been presented to council tonight, the market analysis, the adjustments to the pay bands, the progression adjustments, and the 2% economic adjustment, was all incorporated into the 2018 budget.
Anyway, recommendation before us, what are council's wishes? No one willing to move?
I'll move the recommendation.
Pardon? Support by Counselor Jacobs with question.
Just to make this very clear for me, we're maintaining the step process, correct? I mean, like in this...
We'll have to wait till the motion comes on the floor. Once this one gets defeated, I can't answer a question I don't know the answer to.
Okay.
Further comments on the recommendation, on the motion on the floor? All in favor of the motion on the floor, which is what is proposed in our report? All one of me. Motion's defeated. What are council's wishes? Sure, Counselor Jacobs?
In the scenario presented by Counselor Hammond and the Deputy Mayor and other counselors as well, the step process will remain, correct? So if I start this year as Step One, and then next year I go to Step Two, Step Three, Step Four, those are technically a 3% increase per year, right? Then, I'm still getting my 2% a year. So for the first five years, I'm still getting the 5%, no matter which way you cut the pie.
It's just holding it back one year, a year goes rates.
Maybe I need sleep, I don't know, I can't figure this out.
Deputy Mayor first.
We're just saying, to go forward, we're suggesting, it's not motioned and made yet, that we just go forward as if this review had not been done. 2017, as it's, as the grid was at the end of 2017, we're not asking to change that. It's always been the same. People will still progress through the grid as they did before. We're just saying, rather than implementing the new salary review based on competitiveness, affordability, compliance, and fairness, we're saying, don't do that, stick to what 2017 was, add the 2% increase, which includes cost of living, et cetera, et cetera. That's all we're saying. We're not saying reinvent the wheel, the wheel's already been invented. We're just saying, we don't want to do that extra. That's what we're saying. It's not difficult, it's just using what we had and adding the 2%. If we wouldn't have had that salary review, we would have done the same thing. It's exactly the same. That's all we're saying.
2017 rates, leave the grid at the rates that it was, all five steps, and just add 2%. And whoever's moving up gets the 3% and the 2%. Did anybody else have their hands up? You did, Peter?
No.
Nope? Okay. Okay? So, council's wishes? Deputy Mayor?
Well, I'm not sure exactly how to word it, then. I'd have to rely on Ms. Percy. But that the 2017 salary grid, I'm not sure how it needed to be worded.
Okay. Really short, yep. I'm just getting it in my ear.
2% economic adjustment?
You can just say a 2% economic adjustment.
I, well, then I would move a 2% economic adjustment to all the people listed in Number Two. The non-union staff, board members, council, yes.
Support by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion? In favor? Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Can you back up the 401?
Oh, yes.
Oh, lucky you. Drive carefully.
Thank you very much. Thanks so much.
Your Worship, what happens to 91,000, though, that we had there? Does that go up our tax increase, or does it go into the general fund?
Who do we want? CEO is recommending we go to reserves, because when we do come back to this, we're going to need a pot of money, so. So let's go back to 11.3, a report regarding the regulation of parking lots in residential zones, and I have Ms. Horton on this one.
Bylaw enforcement officers often receive complaints regarding the parking of vehicles in front yards. We also receive complaints regarding the parking of commercial, recreational, and derelict vehicles in residential areas. Provision in connection with these prohibitions are currently within the zoning bylaw and the land maintenance bylaw. And prosecution under those bylaws is commenced under Part Three of the Provincial Offenses Act. And that requires the laying of an information, not just simply writing a ticket. And when an information is laid, both the officer and the accused person must attend court in order to deal with the violation. To address that, administration has prepared a bylaw prohibiting the parking of vehicles on lots and residential zones, other than in a garage, a carport, or in a driveway. The proposed bylaw includes provisions to regulate the parking of commercial vehicles and recreational vehicles. These provisions replicate the regulations in the zoning bylaw, and the parking of derelict vehicles in residential zones being prohibited in the land maintenance bylaw is also included in this proposed bylaw. The reason to draft a separate bylaw with these parallel provisions is because it's less costly and more efficient to prosecute offenses under this proposed bylaw, as we will apply to the ministry to obtain set fines. Once you have those set fines, you can commence under Part Two of the Provincial Offenses Act, which is by way of parking ticket. So upon finding a vehicle parked in contravention of the bylaw, officers might issue a ticket and serve the notice under that part of the act. The accused person may choose to either enter a guilty plea and simply pay the set fine by mail or at this office, or enter a plea of not guilty, and that's when they would be required to attend court. The bylaw also provides for an officer to arrange for the removal of a vehicle found to be parked in contravention of the bylaw, and that's currently something that we cannot do under the zoning bylaw. Following adoption of this bylaw, if council so chooses, but prior to issuing tickets, we would provide some education to the public, advertise it in the paper, and issue warnings to those found to be in contravention. So we would certainly make sure people were aware of it, and that it was prohibited to park your vehicle. Particularly, it's the parking on the front lawns that we have received the most complaints. In connection with the financial impact, set fines that are reasonable yet provide for sufficient deterrence would be submitted to the Regional Chief Justice of the Ontario Court for approval. And fines paid under Part Two of the Provincial Offenses Act are retained by the municipality. So it's recommended that administration be directed to bring forward that bylaw, being a bylaw to regulate parking in residential zones to council, and submit the set fines to the Regional Chief Justice for approval.
Thank you very much. Council? Counselor Verbeke?
Where the mayor, so this, through you, this is going to be held then in provincial court, the fines if they plead guilty, or not guilty? Are they going to go to the provincial courts? Or is it going to be another body of council that's going to hear the hearings?
No.
Similar to Texas?
If it's a guilty, if it's a not guilty plea, the trial is held before a justice of the peace in the provincial court.
Now, this is just for vehicles? Because we're not going to go through our boat and trailer bylaw again, right? This is just...
Recreational vehicles are included, but it's the exact same provisions that is, are included within the zoning bylaw. So I know there was some, a discussion about that at length at council. Nothing is changing, it's simply the ability to ticket a recreational vehicle.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, Worship. Ruth, that's what I was going to ask you to expand on. You answered it for me earlier, was the proposed bylaw also includes provisions to regulate the parking of commercial vehicles?
Yes.
Could you give me a better definition when it comes to commercial vehicles?
Yes.
You don't mean a standard work van? Just expand on that for us.
Sure. A commercial vehicle is over 4,500 kilograms, that's the gross vehicle weight ratio. So it's typically a vehicle that has a yellow CVOR ticket attached to it. So it's the larger size vehicles, typically diesel, but not always. The bylaw, the zoning bylaw in this case, and also this bylaw exempts, though, those commercial vehicles that are of a smaller scale in size. So if they are less than 2.5 meters in width and in height, and less than six meters in length, then they are exempt from the definition of commercial motor vehicle.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ruth, if I may, go back to that recreational vehicle thing, because we had, it was a bonanza here with that recreational vehicle parking in driveways. And it turned out that we couldn't do anything about the ones that were grandfathered in, the ones that had been parked in those driveways for however many years, kept, people could keep it. So we ended up just throwing it out. This will put teeth in that, so people cannot park recreational vehicles in their driveways?
Let me go backwards a little bit through the bylaw. So there is a blanket prohibition of parking a motor vehicle on a lot, so in a residential zone on a lot, other than in a garage or on a residential driveway. So that's kind of the, over the broad scope of the bylaw. However, notwithstanding that, no person could park a recreational vehicle on a residential driveway unless the lot upon it, unless the lot, so within a lot, that it's parked upon contains a dwelling, so it has to have a house, first of all. And it can be parked in a side yard, interior side yard, so between two houses or two buildings, or in a rear yard, but it still has to be on a driveway. So if your driveway extends along the side of your house, you can park your recreational vehicle there, or in your rear yard. If it enters on an alley, you can park your recreational vehicle there. On lots of budding lake area, it's the opposite. So you don't want to block your neighbor's view of the lake. So you can park in the front yard or in the interior side yard still. There's some additions to that, it just has to be a certain distance away from the side yard. But also, specific to recreational vehicles, again, contained in our zoning bylaw, is something I'm sure that council had wrestled with at the time, and that is, it doesn't apply between April and October, if you're loading it or unloading it. So that's the specific section relating to recreational vehicles.
Counselor Dunn?
Through you, Worship. You said here in your report, sufficient fines. Do you have any idea in your head what kind of amount you're looking at?
I looked to the city of Windsor, which recently passed this bylaw, and their fines are $25. are twenty-five dollars, so I'm looking around the twenty-five, probably wouldn't be much more than that.
And again, your worship, so you were saying about commercial vehicles, truck and trailer for carpentry business, and the size of the trailer, you were saying, like they're not allowed to park on the street anymore?
Commercial motor vehicle, so that is anything that runs on motor power, not muscular power or is not trailed behind. So it's a forty-five hundred kilogram gross vehicle weight, and you can tell what the vehicle weight is by looking on the inside door of the vehicle to see where it falls within that range. But then there's the exemption, so there's smaller sized vehicles, typically for perhaps someone that has a home occupation and might park their vehicle in their driveway, or they bring their vehicle home at night. And two of the reasons I believe that that section is in there to prohibit the commercial motor vehicles, one is it blocks your view, your neighbor's view, if you have a large vehicle parked in your driveway, two also is the noise. If it's an air brake vehicle, you certainly don't want that in your, idling in your neighbor's driveway, or if it's diesel, because of the fumes and because of the noise again. But again, smaller scale vehicles, again, I'm sure council of the day considered what is reasonable in circumstances, and if you can determine that it's smaller than that size as set out, then it can be parked there.
And again, the, when it comes to it, because I had a resident complain about a commercial pickup truck with a trailer parking out in front, so this is only pertaining to the actually, on the actual residential properties?
Sorry, I did not answer that part of your question, I apologize. The zoning bylaw actually extends to the roads, so yes, it does exclude it from being parked on the roads as well. So that's the answer to the question. If you live on a residential zone that abuts a commercial, say across the street, the residential zone extends to the center of the road, and then the commercial zone starts and applies to the other side. So you could park your commercial motor vehicle across the street if it's in a commercial zone.
Okay. I had Counsel Verbeke next.
Thank you, Mayor. Ruth, can you give me the bylaw prior to this, because I always was under the impressions that we were not allowed to park on the grass in front of our house? What was the bylaw prior to this for, and is this going to be still the same thing? Are we going to be proactive or are we going to be reactive, just working on complaints?
It was, it is still contained in the zoning bylaw, the prohibition of parking anywhere other than on a driveway or in a garage. So that's taken in parallels our zoning bylaw. So you're right, we have not, residents have not been able to park on their grass, on the front yard or in the side yard. It's been difficult to enforce simply because it requires the laying of an information, so lots of times it's just a matter of asking the resident to move their vehicle. This, as council always says, has more teeth. It's easier to commence that prosecution, it will send a message, and I do believe the officers will be proactive, they have been, they have been the ones asking for this so that they can actually go out and deal with some of these situations.
Counsel Jacobs?
Thank you, your worship. This just brings back bad memories. We went through this previously. I guess my first question would be if, once this is passed and moves forward, will they start writing tickets or will there be an information session put forth? The second thing we came up with, the big one, was these people on Robson Road and so forth down through there, to us their front yard is actually their backyard. So I know it's, we're going to have to be cautious in those particular areas as well. So I just didn't want us to pass this and then go and have a mass ticket writing like they did in Windsor, I guess they wrote something, I would listen to the radio today, a thousand tickets regarding vehicles like this, so. Yeah, this is just going to bring back a lot of bad memories, and I can see a lot of people coming before us in council here again quite shortly, but wish us good luck with this one. Thank you.
There will be a educational component to it, so they won't be out just ticketing, unless, unless of course they have educated the person and they keep violating. But that was the thought going forward, we need to provide people with the information first and then enforce, take those further enforcement steps after.
I think this is a lot more straightforward than the last time we tried.
All the way.
Yeah. So, anyway, there is a rec, oh, Counsel Dunn? Oh, moving, Counsel Hammond supports discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. The next item is a report regarding the Appeal Committee. Ms. Percy?
Counsel, at its meeting, how? October third, two thousand sixteen, established an appeal committee. The Appeal Committee hears appeals from decisions of administrative officials made pursuant to a delegated power or duty where a bylaw specifically provides a right to appeal to that committee. Section nine of the terms of reference for that committee requires that an annual report be brought to council if there's at least one meeting held in that year. Since the establishment of the committee, it is met to hear a total of seven matters, all related to the taxi bylaw. The financial impact associated with these meetings are the administrative costs to facilitate a hearing, and the recommendation before council is to receive the annual report from the Appeal Committee.
Moved by the deputy mayor, support by Counsel Hammond, discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Next report is one regarding the cash for merchandising, or merchandise licensing bylaw. Ms. Percy?
On November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, council approved bylaw eighty dash seventeen, being a bylaw to regulate businesses in the municipality. During the feedback sessions, it was noted that a license for businesses operating cash for merchandise was desired. At the December eleventh council meeting, administration withdrew the report with regard to the cash for merchandise schedule to allow time to circulate it to local businesses and provide an opportunity for their feedback. No feedback was received. The cash for merchandise schedule requires that business owners maintain insurance, keep a registry of all merchandising goods obtained for one year, and deliver a copy of that registry when the OPP requests it. Also required is the responsibility to report to the police any suspected stolen goods, to keep video surveillance on all entrances and exits of the business, and to retain the video for thirty days minimum. Since that report was withdrawn, administration removed the requirement to hold the goods for a minimum of thirty days before the merchandise can be sold. While the municipal act permits municipalities license, regulate, or govern personal property for the business, a regulation within a bylaw must be consistent with the municipal purposes of the bylaw and not to serve for some other purpose, for example, the purpose of law enforcement. The financial impact associated with report, the revenue will be included in the two thousand and nineteen budget, and it's unanticipated, or anticipated that the revenue generated for the new licensing fee is unable to be projected at this time, the fee is the same amount as the, sorry, it's two hundred dollars annually and a hundred and fifty renewal. The recommendation is before council, Appendix P Cash for Merchandise be approved by council and form part of the bylaw regulating businesses in the municipality of Leamington, effective immediately. Administration be authorized to submit set fines created under the bylaw to the Ministry of Attorney General for approval, and administration be directed to bring forward a bylaw to amend the two thousand and eighteen user fee bylaw to include the licensing fees for cash for merchandise business license as set out in this report.
Counsel's wishes? Moved by Counselor, no, question?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Brenda, for bringing this bylaw back up to us. Been working on this one now since we, I think this is our first year we started looking at this one, a few of us on council. This is back when we had some suspect businesses uptown that were, you know, bending the rules at time at best. Anyway, I'm disappointed, I'm thankful that you put everything in there that we worked on, that we shared with law enforcement over the last year or so, but we left out the held portion, which I thought was a very important piece to giving this thing some real teeth. You had thirty days in here, which might be generous, I can understand. I looked at Chatham's today, and I see Chatham does a fifteen day hold period. And the reason why, the reason why that is there is, we all, you know, it's obvious, sometimes items that are obtained through crime activity end up in cash for merchandise, cash for merchandise businesses or pawn shops, whatever you want to call it. But that's just a reality that happens. That fifteen day waiting period, the reason why it's there, and this is after talking to law enforcement numerous times, why they like having that in there there, it gives them time to investigate after the crime. And I'll use, best example is going to be gold. Somebody breaks into deputy mayor's home, steals all her gold, beautiful gold necklaces, they take it to the cash for merchandise place, the next day that can be melted down. So police come along, they hear about the report, they're, as they're doing the report the next day with the deputy mayor, that is being fenced at that shop and is getting melted down right at that time, and there is examples of that happening. So with the way it's set up now, the police would then go days afterwards, they check this report, and they see, hey, I see on January thirtieth, you took in a necklace. Where is that necklace? Well, I don't have that necklace anymore, it's gone. And as in gone, it's melted down, it's completely gone. That's the reason for the held portion, that should be there. I see that it says here that this could be subject to a successful court challenge, and I, I can, I guess anything can be, you know, took into court and challenged and be successful or not successful. But I, I've been told numerous times in my discussions with the PD on this one, that Chatham has got the gold standard when it comes to cash for merchandise or old gold and pawn shop broker licenses. And that fifteen day waiting period or thirty day waiting period is the most important piece to it all. That gives them time to investigate after the crime has happened. Without that, there's a good chance that when they go around to look for that, for that piece of whatever it has been stolen, it won't be there any longer. So I'm hoping that we'll reconsider that portion that's addressed in there, the hold portion, whether it be fifteen days, thirty days, I'd be okay with fifteen days, but we got to give some sort of time for that.
Counsel Hammond?
Your worship, I'm sorry, thank you. Yeah, and I guess I can direct us to Brenda. Brenda, when you've gone through this, and in the report it indicates there was a question about holding on to it for thirty days was less or more safe to the public, what's the rationale behind that? What did you discover about holding on to the merchandise, say in this case thirty days?
We had initially put that in, as it's mentioned in the report, in the previous schedule. We didn't receive any feedback from those businesses, but when we spoke again with the OPP and asked them if that provision was what they wanted it to be, if they wanted it to be thirty days or fifteen days, they indicated that they've never had an issue in this community and that they didn't feel it was necessary. So that's why we had removed it.
Well, all right, so it kind of contradicts with Counsel Wilkinson, it just brought to our attention, because I would have thought too that holding on to it for fifteen days might have been a deterrent for somebody to steal some jewelry in fact, and you know, if they know full well that it maybe can be tracked back to them, so. I was a little, when I read through the report, because I knew we had talked about thirty days at quite some length, so, again, maybe in support of what Counsel Wilkinson is recommending, I think I might consider fifteen days too as being an option.
I'd like the fifteen day thing too, just because of the, it's my jewelry, too bad I only wear fake stuff. Just because it takes a number of days for the police to do their investigation, we did have a break in, and until the police did that, a number of days had gone by. So in order for hopes of recovery of items like that, then perhaps fifteen days wouldn't be unreasonable, also doesn't tie up the business's money for that long, and is still reasonable on both accounts.
Counsel Wilkinson?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to add, you know, I think of all the business licenses that have been introduced to us here in the last little bit, we want to be tough in this particular section. Businesses like this, they obtain their inventory in the most unique manner, you know, they're the only ones out there that buy in this fashion, you know, where anybody can come in out the street, you know, and, you know, they, those, the way that comes to them is very unique. It's not like the superstore where you're buying that through an approved vendor and it's coming in through the right channels. This is very, very, you know, complex. I think we want to have tough, we want to be known in Leamington as having tough bylaws when it comes to cash for merchandise. If we have it, then maybe they decide to go with their goods that are, come from proceeds of crime, they go to a different town where the bylaws aren't as tough. So I think it's imperative that we have good, strong bylaws in this, for this instance.
Ms. Percy first?
Just in response to when the council members who indicated they would hate to have to rewrite this, we wouldn't have to do that. If it's council's desire, the recommendations can be as they are, just the first one would be Appendix P Cash for Merchandise, as amended to include a holding provision of fifteen days be approved, and then the rest would be as in the report.
Ms. Horton? Thank you.
I did just want to point out, the other provisions within this schedule related to the reporting requirements and the recording requirements, and it was really based on an analysis of what's already contained in the, in the draft, and our consultations with the Street Crimes Unit of the OPP. In considering the impact upon businesses of this type, we wanted to really balance that, the public's interest, the business's interest, and what's really reasonable in the circumstances. And there are provisions within the appendix that require the business to keep a registry of all merchandise received, as well as photos, to contain a record as to who it's received from, and to maintain those records for a year, and to provide them to the OPP when asked. It also requires that the video and any digital records from security cameras that they're required to have also be provided to the OPP upon request. So in light of those provisions, we just considered if somebody is going to try to dispose of items contained, that were obtained illegally, that likely would not be visiting a cash for merchandise business because of those reasons. However, I can certainly appreciate the added measures that Counselor Wilkinson is asking us to include. However, in my opinion, they aren't, they aren't going to be helpful, and they are likely not necessary. As far as enforcement, this is probably not something that would be easily enforced or easily analyzed by staff when carrying out any enforcement of the bylaw. Because we have not had complaints about these businesses, they aren't likely going to be on our target list for proactive enforcement or investigation. And the OPP certainly isn't going to be enforcing our bylaws for those, for those reasons. They might utilize it in the, in the case of carrying out some law enforcement if they did receive a complaint of a theft. But I don't see it as being entirely helpful to them and not entirely helpful to the municipality in connection with its regulation of business licensing.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, I was just going to say in the report, it says that even though the cash for merchandise businesses are upstanding, it can be used as a venue for criminals to get quick money by selling stolen goods. So to me, in the report itself, it's telling us that this is more than likely going to happen, so why wouldn't we take an extra precaution and just tack on the fifteen days? Just so that there's a better chance of getting caught and better chance of victims getting their stuff back. So to me, when it's already being done in Chatham, we're not, I don't want to keep falling back on reinventing the wheel, but I mean, it is being done, it's not like we're trying to do something that far out of the ordinary. So to my way of thinking, I would certainly like to add the fifteen days, I reiterate that, and if it needs to be a motion, I'll make that motion.
Okay, well, if I can just ask a quick question, Ruth, and you're saying it won't be helpful, will it be harmful?
No harm to the municipality and its bylaw itself, except if it would be a subject No harm to the municipality and its bylaw itself, except if it would be subject to a court challenge. I can't say how that would play out, there's certainly risk, but, that doesn't mean we shouldn't pass it. We've certainly passed other bylaws where that might be a risk as well. Harmful only to the business itself, and we have not received any feedback from those businesses as to how that would be harmful. So I can't really speculate. I assume if it was going to be devastating, we would've heard from them, but they might not read their mail. I, I don't know. It's, I find it curious that we haven't, I thought we would. We did reach out, so I feel like we've done our due diligence as far as that goes.
Prior, prior to you coming on board, we did have a, a business located in town where this would've, I think, been handy at the time. Fortunately, that business left. And as Counselor Wilkinson says, maybe this would be just one more preventative measure we could take, so, I, I think I'd entertain it as well. So, somebody needs to make the motion to, however you need it worded, to include the, the 15-day hold. Held, I'm sorry, did you make, and I talked over your motion. Way to go.
I said it needs to be.
All right, all right, so, motion made by the Deputy Mayor, supported by Counselor Wilkinson. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. And the next report is one we always look forward to, is the Appointing of an Integrity Commissioner.
This is really just for the purposes of extending an, an existing contract with our current integrity commissioner. We have put out a, an RFP jointly with other municipalities in Essex County for an integrity commissioner. That did close, however, we have not reviewed the submissions. So, our current integrity commissioner, Mr. Swayze, has indicated that he would be amenable to extending his contract until we have an, an integrity commissioner in place, a new one, and that report will come forward at a later date with that recommendation. But in the interim, the recommendation is to extend the contract with Mr. Swayze until a, a contract is entered into pursuant to the RFP, and that the Director of Legal and Legislative Services be authorized to execute the document, the documentation required to extend that contract.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Moved by Counselor Jacobs, supported by Counselor Verbeke with comment.
Yes, Your Worship, so, what is his total fee since we've had him on board so far for Leamington?
Brenda.
For the past two years, I believe it would be under $2,500, but that is a fee per hour of service. It's not like a annual fee, it's a fee for the hours that he has worked, so, I'm thinking it's under $2,500.
So if he doesn't work for us, it doesn't cost nothing, so it has cost us 30 hours already, so he's been working on our case.
He, yes, he did some work, however, it was determined, as I indicated in the report, that there was no investigations. However, to come to that conclusion, he did do some work.
So, motion on the floor? Any other questions, comments? All in favor of the motion? And carried. So move on to matters for approval. We have the Heritage Advisory Committee minutes, looking for mover and seconder. Deputy Mayor and Counselor Dunn, discussion on that motion. All in favor? Carried, and we have the Minutes Room Police Services Board. Questions? Sure?
Yes, Your Worship, just for clarification, it states in here that the bridge, when it opens, staff Sergeant Saklo confirmed that two members of the OPP are the board. That should read as they are on the board.
On the board.
If that's okay, we'll make that correction. And I would move the, the.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Jacobs, supported by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Carried. And the final one is the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee meeting, held December 5. Moved by Counselor Verbeke, supported by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Carried. There was a report on closed session. Ms. Percy.
Closed meeting was held at 5:00 PM prior to the open session of council pursuant to subsection 239 3.11 and 239 2C of the Municipal Act, for the purpose of considering two items. The first item, number one, Ms. Love of Gallagher, McTowell Associates was not available to attend due to the weather conditions, so administration provided that training. No direction was given nor a vote taken. The second item, confidential report CAO, sorry, 0118 dated January 23, 2018, regarding potential sale of a small portion of municipal property. Council provided direction to administration on this matter. Counselor Dunn was not present as he had declared a culinary interest. Proper notice of the meeting was given, and the meeting adjourned at 6:06 PM.
Thank you very much. Consideration of bylaws.
Bylaw 6-18, bylaw to amend 73-17, being a bylaw to provide for tariff fees to be charged in the 2018 by the municipality of Leamington, and that's the fees for the cash for merchandise licenses passed earlier. Bylaw 3-18, being a bylaw to provide for licensing and regulating businesses in the municipality of Leamington, and that will be amended to include the hold. Bylaw 4-18, being a bylaw to adopt official plan amendment number seven to the official plan for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject lands on the south side of Parkdale Avenue, west of Erie Street South, lots 16 and 17, registered plan 723. And bylaw 5-18, being a bylaw to amend comprehensive zoning bylaw number 890-09 for the municipality of Leamington, which pertains to the subject lands ZBA 163, 291 and 295 Erie Street South and south side of Parkdale Avenue. Bylaw 0-8, 8-18, being a bylaw to regulate the parking of motor vehicles. Bylaw 9-17, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the municipality of Leamington at its meeting held January 29, 2018.
Moved by Counselor Verbeke, supported by Counselor Jacobs. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion carries. There were no notices of motion circulated, so we're in open session for council, and Counselor Dunn.
First, through you, Your Worship. First of all, we all attended the hospital gala, and I wanted to congratulate John Hammond on doing a great job as emcee for the hospital. It was a great turnout, so, congratulations, John. Also, we were, a few of us went away to the Roma Conference, and I just wanted to speak to that. Seems that's my job to do the report on it, apparently. We went to quite a few breakout sessions, volunteers in tiny places, whole new world for waste management, it was a couple of them, social media for municipalities. But, out of all the speakers, I guess the best speaker that I enjoyed was Amanda Lang. She was a journalist and an author, and the best part about what she had to offer was that, how throughout time, we've always, the kids always, we want our kids to do better than what we have done. But at this time in our, our history, there may be a challenge for our kids, and so she offered ideas and how to, way of thinking to be able to think outside the box, question everything, to try and come up with new ideas to try and, it was over a half an hour speech, so that's just a very, very light just of how she did, but she was a phenomenal speaker, and I really enjoy her. I would in fact buy her books and, and, and read what she had to offer. She was almost as good a speaker as 13 Ways to Kill Your Community, that gentleman. Anyway, that's all I have to say, sir.
Counselor Hammond.
Your Worship, thank you. I apologize to Rob, I'm gonna ask you a question, Rob, that I should've done before, give you a heads up. Again, I was asked about the advanced green turn signal on Highway 77 on the bypass. If you've had any success in trying to convince them to put it in advance and advance green left turn.
Here, Mayor Patterson. Counselor, I can only say that I, I've taken that request and put it through the Engineering Department. I don't know the status of it right now, but I can follow up tomorrow.
Thanks, Your Worship, I appreciate it.
Counselor Wilkinson.
One thing I think is worth mentioning is something we've been working on the last couple budgets is, and I want to thank staff for getting it done, is that our City Works program now is online. So, no longer do you have to call in or visit our counter, you can simply, I did it on the weekend, it's fantastic. I love it, it is beautiful, just what we wanted. Thank you so much, and I urge people to use it in the proper manner, you know, don't go abusing it, but it is there, please use it, and give it a try. Thank you.
Counselor Verbeke.
Your Worship, thanks, I had the privilege of attending Roma also, and I'm just, I guess, shocked of the accusations that were made and what has transpired since we've heard some speeches there. Deputy Mayor and myself went to the shaping of the Agri Sector Business Breakfast at the OGVG office. It was quite interesting, the first speaker was from, I believe, Leamington Spa, or in that area, from England. That was good, I mean, it's succession planning about farming and, and the more food we're gonna need, and blah, 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 and you know what's, you know what it's like, I mean, I don't know where we're gonna get it from. And also on February the 8th, it's a very important event for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. They have put all their effort this year to this one, up to now, and then they're gonna have a music event coming up, but it's a mental health seminar, it's gonna be at the complex, February the 8th, from 5 to 9. It's free, it's, it's, if you need help, fine, if you, if you have somebody in the family that needs it, I mean, they've really worked hard on this, and, and it's, I guess this is gonna be the next, the next disease almost, so, please at least come out and give them your support. Thank you.
Anyone else? Really quickly, thank you, Counselor Verbeke, for mentioning that, I forgot to write that down, to bring it up. So, if you are free on the February the 8th, it's at the complex, there will be free pizza provided, so, well, for those in attendance. Anyway, Thursday, January 18th, bright and early in the morning, we did have the Chamber of Commerce Mayor's Breakfast, and several of you were in attendance, along with our directors, which was really pleasant to be standing up there in front of everybody and seeing some good friendly faces, so, I thought the event went rather well, and we got some really, really good coverage on, on everything. Saturday evening, the January 20th, was the Erie Shores, what are we called now, Health Foundation Gala. Again, very, very well attended, and a pleasure to be there, and, great meal as always, always late, but great meal just the same. And, and Counselor Hammond, yeah, I probably should've given you the hook partway through the night, but, pretty good.
Oh, Johnny, come on.
It was a lot of fun, anyway. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, which was already mentioned by both Counselors Dunn and Verbeke, we were in attendance at the Roma Conference. I think the, the thing that stuck out to me the most was, all I heard about was Northern Ontario, the GTA, and Central Ontario. It seems that Southern Ontario, and especially remote Southern Ontario, has been forgotten, so we've got to make some more noise at various levels of government, so. Yep. And I guess just, just to wind it up, I, I want to thank all of our staff, I'll put it through the CAO, and you can get it to all of them, for all the work that they've done on this Starbucks application, and then to all of us on council too. I know this was an uncomfortable decision to make, because we know it's affecting a small group of our residents, I'm sure they aren't overly pleased with us, but they're probably not surprised either. This is, this is an important piece to the puzzle of, of moving Leamington forward, and I compliment you on, on making a really good decision tonight on that, so thank you very much for, for, for stepping forward on it, so, and let's hope it's as successful as we think it's going to be, and we'll continue to draw more quality businesses into our municipality, so. Other than that, are there statements, members, non-debatable? Anybody want to adjourn? Counselor Verbeke and Counselor Jacobs, all in favor? Carried.